It will be recorded.
Good evening, everybody. I'd like to welcome you to the regularly scheduled city council meeting for March the 18th of 2024. If you could all stand and join us with the pledge of allegiance, we'd appreciate it.
I pledge allegiance to the Thine of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dominique, we don't have agendas up on our screen. Sorry about that. No, that's me.
Thank you, everybody. If we could get a roll call, please.
Thank you.
Councilmember Strowman?
Here.
Councilmember Walker?
Here.
Councilmember Engle?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Hagan?
Here.
Mayor Bellinger?
Here. Thank you. City Manager Remo?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make some introductions. You're seeing some new faces this evening. To my left is our new deputy city clerk, Jenny Thompson. She will be taking over for council meetings as your clerk. Also, our public works superintendent, Justin Collins, is out of the office this week, and so substituting for him for tonight's meeting is Jake Cook, our crew leader. And then we also have interim police chief, Hargraves. And then, you know Jalen's face. But I wanted to just make sure, because I know there's some new faces at the meeting, that everybody gets introduced. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Welcome, everybody. All right. First up is our consent calendar. These items are considered routine in nature and are acted upon by a single action unless requested by an individual council member or member of the public for special consideration. Any thoughts here at the council here of anything there of concern we need to pull or for future consideration?
I'd like to pull number two.
All right. Anybody in the council chambers here that has any concerns with the consent calendar for further discussion? Seeing none, we can take a motion on the balance then and come back to item two?
I'll motion to approve the balance of the consent calendar.
I'd second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero. Back to consent item number two, the register of demands. Councilmember Strowman?
Just two, two quick questions. There are two line items for Ardua. One is in the amount of $752.50 for the City of Escalon pedestrian crossing at Escalon Avenue and High School. And then, the second one is in the amount of $1,120 for the City of Escalon, St. Clair water line replacement at Kern Street, Escalon, California. And I was reviewing the CIP program, and I don't see these two projects mentioned. So, I'm just wondering what we're paying Ardua for, for these two particular projects.
You or me? Me, okay. So, regarding the St. Clair project, that project was actually, was budgeted in this year's fiscal year, 2023-24. However, it was under water valve replacement at that time. I think that the, the street name was just not included at that time on that item. So, it was budgeted for. It is a part of the budget. I think it's somewhere between 55,000 to 65,000. Some of the buildings from Ardua might say Kern on it, because it's at the cross street of Kern and St. Clair. And so, there has been a little confusion on the street address. Regarding the Escalon Avenue pedestrian item, Jalen, if you could take the lead on that one?
Yeah. So, as we will discuss in item nine, staff is exploring various transportation projects utilizing some of the fund balance we have in our transportation-related funds and the monies that we get every year. So, we have done a little exploration of a crossing at Escalon Avenue as it pertains to pedestrian safety. And we'll talk about that a little bit further in item nine.
Nothing further, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Then if I can get a motion on item two?
I'll make a motion on number two.
I'll second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of item two on the consent?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Off to item seven, staff communications.
Thank you, Mayor. Before you, we have our monthly reports for the month of February. The treasures report, Police Department, Animal Control, Recreation, Development Services, Public Works, Building Department, Water Department, and Wastewater Treatment Plant Report. If you have any questions on any of those reports, please let us know, or comments or feedback.
Questions here at the dais here?
From the council? No, I'd just like to, to thank Public Works for doing a good job over at the community center, setting up for the baseball and softball. You guys really made it look real nice out there. Had a lot of good feedback from the citizens on it. So, so, thank you.
Agreed here with that. Yeah. Pass that along to the rest of the crew, please. Anybody out in the audience had any questions on staff communications before we move on?
Just have one comment related to the FLOC LPR alerts. In reading the Police Department report, it appears that they're working.
They are.
And so, for the month of February, how many alerts did we have?
I believe we had three.
And then, do we?
So, there's multiple different types of alerts. We get very, we get a lot of stolen license plate alerts. A lot of those are misreads, or one license plate was reported stolen, and the license plate is on the correct vehicle. We get so many of those, not all the officers respond to those. We'll, if we get an alert, we'll run the license plate, see if it looks like it comes back to the vehicle. The stolen vehicles are the ones that we all respond to immediately. We've had three of them. I believe one of them might have been a misread. I know we just had one the other day, and that one was a misread. But I think we had three stolen vehicle alerts, and then I want to say around 140-something stolen license plate alerts. Let me verify.
Wow. It says 148 in the month of February.
That sounds accurate, yes.
It seems like it's, it was, even with just three, I mean, that's three stolen vehicles that were pulling off the street?
No, there were two recoveries. Three alerts we found and stopped, two of them. We got two stolen vehicle recoveries.
We have all of the cameras for that system in place at this point. Now, we had stepped it out with the budget and everything to bring them all online. Do you have them all there now?
No, we do not. So, we currently have five cameras. We have McHenry and Jones, Escalon Avenue and Libby, Highway 120 at Brennan and Campbell, and then Santa Fe at Riley. So, we got kind of all the major inlets coming into town as of currently. The cameras are designed to capture the back license plate and vehicles coming into town, because most of the roadways we have them on are narrow enough. They do catch quite a bit of the traffic coming in as well. So, the next plan was to get cameras, five additional cameras to capture the vehicles leaving, so we can get vehicles entering town and then vehicles leaving town. Chief Flores decided not to move forward with the five for the vehicles coming into town at this budget cycle, and I think that's still planned for a future expansion.
Great. Thank you.
Welcome.
Any other updates from staff we need to know about?
Public Works updates?
Act to normal. Every 15 minutes is over, and baseball season's underway, and everything's status quo for us.
Two items tonight. At this time of the month, when we do our report, staff will provide a verbal update to the council on the pending development projects. Just to, so you and the, the public are aware, these are posted on the city's website under applications, under review, in the planning page. We do have two applications that are currently under review. One, we received back in August and haven't heard from the applicant in a while, but they are proposing a 17-unit apartment complex north of 120 or Jackson at Elizabeth. That would include two commercial pads as well. Again, we have not heard from the applicant in, in a couple of months. The other is a proposed new liquor store, was previously approved by the planning commission a couple of years ago. They will go before the planning commission in April to get their site and architecture approval extended. Those last for two years, so they'll go in April to get that extended. So, those are the two kind of pending development projects.
Where is that last one located, Jalen?
That is at the corner of McHenry and Roosevelt. Second item, I mentioned, I think, last month. We'll remind you and then share. All traffic calming program submittals that are received by city staff will be shared on the monthly report. We don't have any from February, but we did receive one in March, so next month you will see that. It's basically on First Street in front of the school there, El Portal. So, we'll be exploring that through our process, through engineering with PD and, and others.
Any other questions here at the council, or any other updates we need from any other staff, before we move to the next item?
I have some updates. Don't forget your Form 700s. If you need me to print out a printed copy to complete, just let me know, and I can have that done for you. Also, we did speak with Congressman Josh Harder's office today. They've opened up their CPF or CPF funding cycle. It's an appropriations period where you can apply for projects. It's a very short window. Last year, we applied to that funding for both the wastewater treatment plant project as well as SSJID. I intend to get an application over to them for the SSJID project, because that was one that we did last year. They're, they're limited at certain amounts of money, and so at this time, I'll be requesting for 2 million. That's the max you can ask on a water project at this point in time. And then, I'm also going to be working with the Police Department to see if we can submit an application, if possible, for any equipment that we have moving forward. They also applied last year for radios. We both were not funded, but neither of our projects were funded last year, but they are encouraging us to submit again this year.
Can I ask a quick question?
Please.
Do we know why we were rejected, or was there a bigger need somewhere else, or was it because we didn't fit a specific protocol, or?
No. When we had spoken to them, it's just a, a large group of people, you know, and they, they don't know the temperature of anybody. And so, one year, they feel like something can go through, the next year, it doesn't. And so, it was actually really, really highly encouraged for last year that our project would be funded for SSJID, because the City of Ripons was funded, and then it ended up not being funded. And so, it's just one of those things. They don't, they're very limited on what they can say. It's just a large group, and they're kind of all over the place, depending on, on how it is. And so, they did send us some information today on projects that were funded in last year's cycle, so we can have a good idea. And submission-wise, they didn't say anything was lacking or, or that anything was missing. So, it's just, there, a lot of cities and a lot of agencies are applying for that money, too. So, I'm sure they have a ton of applications coming in.
Is there any way that we can be a squeakier wheel, potentially, or no?
Not that I'm aware of. I mean, we talked to them today. We, we told them what our intent was and that we were moving forward on these items. They were positive about us resubmitting on a project last year. And they have staff that will be working with the Police Department to put a package together for them as well. And so, they're, they really are providing some technical assistance. It's just a really short window to get it in. They give you about 10 days to submit.
Okay. Ask for the world, see what we can get.
So, I have a comment on that. So, last year, I, I was on the, the phone with Dominique and with Congressman Harder's office. And I just want to publicly thank Dominique for those efforts. And it's probably a, a year late, but I feel like you jumped through so many hoops to submit that application and to turn around and get denied, when it's very clear that our surface water project is so much further along than our neighbors to the southeast or southwest. They're not even part of SSJID yet, and yet, they received funding, but yet, the City of Escalon did not. Quite honestly, my belief, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem is, just boils down to politics. I felt like Dominique and staff went above and beyond to submit that grant application, and just to be told no, it's just, all's the politics. So, thank you for all of your hard work last year, and good luck this year.
Yeah, it is a very large event. And so, I'm, you know, you're, you're basically competing against everybody else's stuff. So, I'm sure that definitely plays into everything. So.
Appreciate the efforts. Keep pushing forward. Do what you can.
Thank you.
All right.
Can our, one quick question. Can our friends at Ardua or Blackwater help you with that application?
Yes. Last year, they did as well.
Okay.
Yeah. So, I usually reach out to them, have them update whatever I need to do to be able to fit in that $2 million window. And so, essentially, they'll want me to create a project, like a phase zing for 2 million. That way, it's done. Last year, I think they asked us to apply. The max was 3.5 million, and so, we did that last year. We kind of created it to where this is what we'd get, this is what we do for the 3.5 million. So, now, it's been dropped down to 2 million. This is what we can do in a phase with 2 million. So.
All right. Next up is matters presented from the audience. The public may address the city council on any item that is on the agenda at the time the item is called. The public may also address the city council on any item not on the agenda that is within the subject matter of the City of Escalon. Each speaker is limited to a maximum of five minutes. Unused time may not be yielded to another speaker. You may state your name and address for the record. However, it is not required. Due to state law, action will not be taken on an item that is not on the agenda, and except for brief responses, the council is prohibited from discussing any item not on the agenda. If it requires action, it will be referred to staff and/or placed on a future agenda. The determination of whether an item is within the subject matter of the city is a discretionary decision made by the mayor. And with that, we open it up to the public here in the chambers, if you'd like to come to the podium and discuss anything tonight.
Might not be the right time. Kurt Russell, I addressed the council a little about three months ago about the good neighbor policy and the shared fence that I share with the City of Escalon on my addresses Alberto Lane, but there's the Breeze Way, the walkway that goes from Alberto Lane back to Brennan. I talked to Justin. He had told me that there was something on the agenda about somehow incorporating that particular or subdivision in to be applicable for the good neighbor policy. I don't know if you guys are discussing that tonight?
I have not discussed it with you.
Is anyone aware of something on that, a mandate for that or not?
There's no item tonight, but I do know that we have been talking with our, what's called the LLDBAD consultant to see if this would fall within the purview of the LLD or BAD. We are currently getting some more information from the consultant, and then we'll take it into the next year's LLDBAD budgets, if it is, in fact, an eligible cost. So, we are working on it diligently.
Okay. I was, as Justin alluded, if something would be cited tonight, and if not, then we're looking at the budget meeting for July. Is that correct?
Okay. So, maybe Justin was referring to mid-year, but it, that will not be in mid-year budget?
Okay, very good. You don't want me to hit the highlights of that again, about you guys being a good neighbor, AV 1040, and me having done all the maintenance for the taxes that I'm paying. That SWIP company has deteriorated the fence that I've repaired for 20 years. And I, you guys remember, I highlighted it saying, if we shared the cost of that fence, I would continue to maintain it for the next 20 years as well. So, anyhow, just think about that, and I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Since we're on Belleterra, several months ago, six, eight months ago, the city came out and marked some sidewalks that are in really raised condition due to redwood trees out there. They've been marked red paint, what have you. I, is there a schedule set up? Do you know them, come out there and do something about it?
We're talking over by your neighborhood, right? Or Belleterra's, which, which spot?
Well, it's on Alberto, and it goes around the corner to Farin Alley.
Not that I'm aware of yet, but I'll talk to you.
Anyway, you guys can get back to us and let us know, and?
Correct.
Okay. Waste Water Treatment Plant. Apparently, we're going to have an update next month. Can we nail that down? Is that the first meeting or second meeting?
Second meeting is usually when we do reports.
Okay. It would be helpful at that time, so we can, as citizens, understand what our staff and council are doing to determine what's been submitted to the state, what are we actually having them look at to approve, and what, what that cost is. It's been kind of not transparent how we're dealing with the funding, where we're at with it. There's, I've, I've heard different things from different people. But we need to get, I think, the Ardua, Blackwater, whomever, out here to actually answer those questions about where they're at. It hasn't been forthcoming from staff, so let's hear it from the horse's mouth, and maybe we can get some kind of budget, what we've been paying for, to where they've gotten at this point here, to actually see it. I was looking at the midterm budget that's going to be expressed tonight. It looked like 600,000 had been spent on the surface water project. Is that all plans? You know, I don't know what that is. It'd be nice to know where all those monies are going, if that came out of that $1 million from Tracy Fund, because it's not called out anymore. I'm looking for a lot more information at this update meeting than we've gotten in the past. So, hopefully, you'll all be around asking questions, you know, about these high-dollar problems that the city addresses. They're more important than anything else that really comes up here, because it's going to cost the taxpayers, you and me, and everybody else, a lot of money to pay for these things. So, I look forward to that. Thank you.
Anybody else in the audience here in the chambers would like to speak on matters presented from the audience?
Sure.
All right. Seeing none, we're going to go ahead and close matters presented from the audience and move on to administrative matters. Item number eight, the review and approval of the mid-year budget.
I'm sorry. I'm new to this, and I have my hand ring, but I apologize. I would like to speak if possible.
Go ahead.
My name is Casey Silva, 2121 Mission Street. This is something that is not on the agenda, but I'm hoping to begin an inquiry or to begin picking brains to help understand better. In the last, like, maybe month and a half, there's been three lockdowns that I know of. I'm trying to understand, when I reflect and look back on those dates in the police reports, there's a lot of concerning threats coming in, and I'm, I'm interested to know, is this new? Is something being addressed? I know that there's things that can't be told to us for safety reasons, but there's also not a lot of information and for no lockdowns in, I don't know how long, to three. I'm a little concerned, and it's been a little quiet about it.
I think, I think for most of that information, you're probably going to want to reach out to the school district.
I will be definitely going to the school district tomorrow, but I also think, I'm reading things in the police report that, as citizens, we, we're not, we have to look for that information. It's, it's something to think about. I know we've talked about on groups, NICSOL reports. I will definitely be addressing it with the school district, but there's also concerns that, how many threats can come in in one day that, I, I could read some of them if you'd like. It, it's just a matter that I think that the Police Department should be aware of as well. And you're publishing it, but it's, I can go to the school district all day, but there's also concerns as a citizen.
So, the first?
I can't.
Sorry, there's always a little delay. So, go ahead.
So, the first lockdown that I'm aware of is the one over at Van Allen School. That one was a, handled by the Sheriff's Department. We responded. Our SRO was notified, and so we responded out there. That was a while ago, and that was unrelated to the two we had in two days, I believe, last week, or the week before. The two we had were in response to anonymous tips that were, came through the Sheriff's Department, and they appear to be a student just using an anonymous application to.
Isn't that something we could be sharing somehow instead of, and I did, I know that the school district as well, but there should also be some type of, I, I, it just seems that there was nothing on either end, and it's something that I'm bringing up as a citizen, because it's, it's concerning, especially because I'm reading these. I can assume it's a, a citizen or a student, but there's no follow-up on either part, and then I get to trust that everything's great. And, you know, like, there's reasons people are raising our children here, and I, I want to continue to feel that trust. So, I think that communication is just something for, for the future.
Okay. We can, we can look into that.
We have our monthly two-plus-two meeting with the school this week, and that, that is one of our topics of discussion this week. So, we will be talking with them about them.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other topics?
All right. Then we're going to go ahead and close matters presented from the audience
at this point, and move on to administrative item number eight, mid-year budget review and recommended revisions.
And we have Andy Heath on the line. He'll be doing this remotely, and so, we're going to go ahead and share the screen with him.
Thank you.
Here you go, Andy.
Okay, great. Okay, great. Thank you. Find my document here.
Yes.
Big enough for the rest of us to see.
Okay.
There we go.
Let me go back here. Sorry, I got three screens open. I'm trying to get this going. There we go. Okay. All right. Thank you, Dominique. Mr. Mayor, members of the council. For the record, Andy Heath, the financial consultant to the city. What I'd like to do for you tonight is just go through, but quickly, a, quite a few slides, actually, on the fiscal '23-'24 mid-year budget update. As part of tonight's presentation, what I'm going to be doing is, are you guys controlling the, the screen itself? Oh, no, I got it.
That's all you.
Yeah, but how, how do you move the slide? Because?
Enter.
If I can do this.
Jenny's, this is Jenny's screen that we're looking at.
You need me to?
I'll move it on my side. There, there we go. There we go. Okay.
If you just want to let me know when to go forward, I can, Andy.
Sorry?
If you let me know when to go to the next slide, I can move it for you.
Okay, perfect. Okay, great. Thank you. As part of tonight's discussion, I'll be going over an overview of the mid-year budget review process, the things that actually went into putting together the mid-year document for you to consider tonight. We'll look at some general fund revenues and expenditures. The general fund being the largest discretionary fund that the city does have. So, you'll see what revenues and expenditures are recommended to change since the adoption of proposed budget earlier this year. General fund financial forecast update, so that has been updated, consistent with some of the base changes that we're seeing in the general fund as we update the revenues and expenditures, and more importantly, considering some of the things that are on the future horizon for the city, particularly CalPERS unfunded liability costs, which will impact the city in, in the coming years. We'll look at the city's three enterprise, or actually four enterprise funds, water, wastewater, stormwater, and the transit fund. And then, I have looked at all the city's transportation funds, because there's some changes that we're recommending in the transportation funds, and also the lease fund, which is a supplemental law enforcement, a COPS grant fund that the city does have, that they receive funding for every year. And then, we'll really quickly look at the fiscal '24-'25 budget development. For the next slide, please. As part of the mid-year budget review process, some of the things that, that were considered was looking at the fiscal '22-'23 financial activity. So, as you know, we're getting ready to start the audit for fiscal '22-'23. And as a result, most of the entries that are required for the audit itself have been updated, particularly the accruals that actually go into fiscal '22-'23. So, these are periodic numbers. So, I looked at all of that activity, actually updated the information into the forecast and to the fund schedules that are part of your mid-year document. And then, we developed estimates for the year-end activity based on what we're seeing to date, and then all the fund balances have been brought forward as well. So, most of the fund balances you're seeing through fiscal '22-'23 that have carried over into fiscal '23-'24. through fiscal '22-'23 that have carried over into fiscal '23-'24 are good fund balances. We looked at updated baseline budget information that was received from management, as necessary for the remainder of fiscal '22-'24. So requests was made for any information that needed to be built into the base budget, and any mid-year changes that needed to be considered, and all of that information has been built in. We'll be going through the changes that are being recommended for you tonight. Incorporate budget adjustments approved by the city council subsequent to the adoption of the '23-'24 budget. So anything that has required a budgetary change, mainly the SRO program that has been added back to the budget, added to the budget, actually, has been added back to the budget in the mid-year, and any other changes as well have been updated. And then we looked at revenue trends and forecasts, knowing that we have received about six or seven months' worth of information that actually went into the development of the mid-year process. So we looked at the revenue trends and expenditure trends, and then in some cases extrapolated that information out through the end of the fiscal year, and then where we know that we are receiving certain revenues based on historical collections, and then parlaying that into increases for the current year. We have updated those in the general fund, and I'll be going through some of those revenues shortly. Next slide, please. Okay, let's move on to the general fund. So you can see, when you adopted the budget for the general fund, we anticipated about four point, just under 4.9 million revenue coming in, and just under 5.9 million in expenditures going out. When the budget was adopted, just under a million, between $900,000 and $1 million was anticipated to be used from the city's reserves. This stemmed from a lot of different things, but basically, that use of reserves that your council adopted at the beginning of the year was predicated on the loss of a major sales taxpayer in the city, where you actually lost your largest sales taxpayer that had been in the city for a number of years, and basically overnight, that $400,000 a year was wiped out. So that was built into the '23-'24 budget. Also, this budget assumed that all staff positions were filled for the entirety of the year. That has not been the case for some departments. So where certain departments charge their positions to the general fund, you're going to see a salary savings there. But nonetheless, when we put the budget together, we do anticipate full staffing. And then at some point in time during the year, that full staffing will be achieved. That's not the case so far. So you'll see some savings there. And then also, there was a lot of one-time activity, particularly the police department, that was actually built into the budget, and I have that information on the slide that we'll be going through. That has not changed, although a lot of that money has not been spent in the current budget or as of yet. Those items remain budgeted and make up the amount that's actually being recommended at mid-year, which is, now, instead of 4.8 million in revenue, we're adding about $227,000 in revenue to take it to 5.1. And you can see the expenditures essentially are the same, just don't grow very much at all. In fact, they grow less than $7,000 to, then, $5.7 million. So at the end of the day, assuming all of the recommendations that will be put before you for the general fund come to fruition, and assuming when we put this together, all positions are filled, which they're not, ultimately, we anticipate a mid-year budget use of reserve through about 3/4 of a million dollars instead of a million dollars. So some savings has accrued to the bottom line, and we'll go through what some of those changes are. Next slide, please. On the revenue side, as I mentioned, we're anticipating an increase in revenue forecasts of just about $227,000. You can see here, there's a lot of different things that go into this, but what I, you know, I want to go through each one of these only because a lot of these are used as predictors for the future. So a lot of these actually increase the base budget, where because of inflation and the way revenues grow, these now increase the budget up by this much, and then ultimately in the future will increase future budgets as well. So for property taxes, you have about $4,400 being out of there, and this is just based on the first payment that was received in December or January from the Teter Plan for property taxes. So it's extrapolating that out and adding another $4,000 there. Property tax interest, this is the money that is basically paid by the county of San Joaquin to the city for them holding our property taxes, the city's property taxes, until they are actually paid to the city. Because interest rates have increased significantly and remain high, higher than they've been in a long time, we can expect that interest rates, and you'll see that throughout this presentation, will actually enable the city to earn more interest in a lot of different funds. Sales taxes, an increase of about $15,000 there. This is just based on the most recent forecast that's been received. Prop 172 sales tax, similarly, this is particularly for public safety. It can only be used for public safety. This is an increase of about $9,500 there. Franchise fees for garbage, increase of about $6,000 there, and this is just essentially based on what's been received to date and what can be expected to be received through the end of the year. Cell tower rents, the, I think it was T-Mobile that actually is contracting with the city for a cell tower. That money that's been coming in, when I take that out, is less than what has been received in the past. So adjusting that downward by about $9,300. Post reimbursements, these are reimbursements from the state of California for the police department's participation in training programs sponsored by Post. To the extent that training is Post-applicable, you can usually get reimbursed for that. When the city's budget was originally put together, you had a number in there for Post. Typically, when I put a budget together, I don't add Post until it's actually received. So Post always goes to offset future costs. So what this is doing is it's just lowering that Post reimbursement so that the actual amount that's been received to date is the amount that's been spent to date. So it's still written out by a small amount. Planning and engineering fees, so you've got a lot going on in the city from a development perspective, and as a result, your planning fees and your engineering fees are higher than originally budgeted. So we're looking to add $40,000 more to planning fees, and $35,000 more to engineering fees. Next slide, please. Sale of property, so there was a sale of property that the city did have, and that resulted in $42,153 actually coming in as a one-time revenue to the city's general fund, but that has been added back. Insurance refunds, another $15,817 has been received to date there. So that's been added back. SRO reimbursement, you can see here that I am actually adding the reimbursement from the school district for the school resource officer. It's been added to the budget. So this is the amount that's anticipated to be received specifically for fiscal '23-'24, and I believe this is a two-year grant, and this is the amount that is going to be received in fiscal '23-'24. Recreation revenues, so looked at every, most of the recreation revenues, actually all the recreation revenues, and true goes up based on what's been received to date, and what we can anticipate to be received based on what was ultimately received last year. So for all the city's recreation programs, we're adding just under $8400 in revenue to those programs as well. And then when you look at all the other revenues, and there's a number, there's a number of them, and you add them all up, we're adding about $13,000 more. In the aggregate, for the city's general fund, however, all of this together increases the revenue that's being forecasted by about $227,502. So that revenue increase is actually about 4.7% of the revenue that was adopted for the general fund originally. But again, many of these items actually do impact the future and can be extrapolated into the future from a forecasting perspective as we look at revenues that might be coming in, particularly sales tax, property tax, and other types of taxes that are in there. Next slide, please. All right, moving on into the appropriations. So again, not a whole lot of changes here, but I will go through some of the changes that are being recommended in the individual departments in the city's general fund. These four budgets here, for insurance, the corporation yard, the legislative program, and management and support, you can see that there's no, no money there that's being recommended to be changed, okay? And that is essentially because all of the costs associated with these four programs are zero in these four departments when you actually take all the costs and parlay those costs into other general fund departments from a support perspective, and more importantly, into other funds. This is what the city does to what's called allocate costs to other departments and to other funds. All four of these activities actually support the city as a whole, where you have your insurance programs, which is your liability, your workers' comp, and then the other insurance the city has, your corporation yard supports a lot of the activities associated with the public works functions, transportation functions, a lot of capital functions. Legislative supports the city as a whole, as does management and support, like the finance director, your city manager, city clerk, those sorts of things. So all of the, all of these charges are actually allocated based on a formula that the city has been using over time from prior year costs. So although there are changes in these areas, and you can see in the insurance department, you have lower liability costs in property insurance, so you're saving about $5,000 there, but I did add the workers' comp costs in the aggregate to this budget as well for $209,000. That net change there is actually nothing when you look at the insurance department, but it's been allocated to all the other departments and funds in the city based on historical averages. So I just wanted to call that out. Corporation yard, one thing we do when we put the mid-year budget together is we look at where stopping is likely to, or the stopping costs are likely to be by the end of the year. So corporation yard, we just add some staffing costs so that we're added back, and then ultimately allocated out to all the other funds and departments. Similarly, legislative had some staffing costs that were adjusted for management and support. The city continues to have the finance director vacancy, so there is salary savings. It's been incurred to date there. However, you do have higher consulting costs and also some higher information technology costs that have been added back to that budget. Next slide, please. Continuing on with the general fund, in your police department, we're actually recommending to add about $20,195 in spending authority at mid-year, and this is to help offset what is anticipated to be an increase in salary costs due to a true-up of all the salaries, and then a, an increase in the overtime for the police department, just under $6,000 there. Increase in the dispatch budget based on the contract that's out there right now, about $16,000 for the remainder of the current fiscal year. Some radio upgrades, $8,000 more there. And then you can see there, when you look at all the cost allocations and the way they are adjusted based on the '22-'23 actuals, things actually changed, and the police department ended up having lower cost allocations that were accrued to that. One thing I did mention at the outset is that the police department does have a considerable amount in some of the one-time activity that is actually built into the general fund. We did not change that. So the $213,000 in one-time costs actually remain appropriated at mid-year for things like radio upgrades, handguns, desk vehicles, rim server, and a dust stop. So all of those things remain appropriated. In the city's street lighting department, specifically in the general fund, just under $3,000 being added back there, and that is simply due to staffing costs being updated. Next slide, please. In the streets department, another $52,000 being added there, and this is just to true up what is actually charged through those cost allocations, that first slide that we went over, for general government and cost centers. So some of the budgets, when the budget was originally adopted, I didn't change that. I didn't analyze that. We wanted to get the budget adopted, but after going back and looking at everything and truing up all the percentages, you'll see a lot of ins and outs. The bottom line is, the general fund didn't change too much, nor did any other fund, but you're seeing departments being true up for actually what should be charged for general government and cost center charges. So what streets gets $52,000 more in cost, planning actually gets $54,000 less in cost, basically for the same reason. So just a change there for that. We do still have, as part of the one-time costs that were approved with the adopted budget, the $120,000 budgeted for the housing element and ordinance updates. So that amount remains budgeted in the planning budget for building. You can see a reduction there, and that is just because of updated allocations of general government cost center charges, which were too high with the initial budget. Next slide, please. Engineering also has savings of about $23,579 as a departmental budget based on the true-up of general government and cost center charges. Parks, adding $58,000 there based on an updated landscaping contract, Hogan hydro seedings, and city orchard removals, $43,000 more there for those three things. And then we also have about a $15,000 change in the general government and cost center charges. Also, for library, savings of just under $3,000, and again, this is just because of general government and cost center charges. Not a lot changed from a substance of perspective other than these general government and cost center charges in the general fund. Next slide, please. In the community center, savings of about $16,635 there. You have personnel cost updates that are being done for the community center, and then you also have the $65,000 that is also part of the array of one-time items that were adopted with the budget that was approved for fiscal '23-'24. You have $65,000 that remains budgeted for an AC unit, ice machine, and some other equipment specifically for the community center. When you look at all other appropriations in the general fund, savings of about $5,700 there. So not a lot out there. So not a whole lot of changes in the, in the city's general fund. We just basically have the true-up of the SRO and the police department, adding some other small expenditures, but you have a lot of movement between departments, and funds for that matter, for the general government and cost center charges that I've covered on multiple departments. So next slide, please. These are the one-time items that were approved with the fiscal '23-'24 budget. So you can see here, within that budget, just under a half a million dollars was added on a one-time basis for expenditure in fiscal '23-'24. I did not change any of these, and it's not recommended that any of these change. Again, a lot of this has not been spent yet, but it remains part of the budget that's being recommended tonight. So you can see here, there's scorpion activity, equipment, software, and infrastructure. You have civic center, silver replacement, $10,000 there. Some equipment for management and support, just under $20,000 there. Talked about the police activities, also the planning, housing element, ordinance updates, and then the AC unit, ice machine and equipment at the city's community center. So again, 471,900 in one-time activity remains in the fiscal '23-'24 budget. Next slide, please.
Done. What's your question?
Yeah?
$120,000 for the housing element. Is that a pass-through charge given that they've got?
No, that's coming from the general fund.
Yeah, all of the activity that we're looking at right now is in the general fund.
Thank you, Andy.
Okay. Okay, all right. Let's see. Looking at the, so assuming all of that comes to fruition. So if we see the actual revenue come in, a couple hundred thousand dollars higher there than the original budget, and see expenditures come in, just under $7,000 more than the original budget, this is what your reserves will look like by the end of the year, on June 30, 2024. So you have just over $4 million in reserves, and that reserve is made up of your policy. So you have just over $4 million in reserves and that reserve is made up of your policy, 33% assigned reserve, just over 1.9 million there. There's some non-spinable reserve, which are things like deposits and the such that are part of your fund balance, but they can't be spent or used for anything because they're earmarked for something else. And that's about 250,000 there. And then your unassigned fund balance will be just under 1.9 million. When you look at the general fund, 33% assigned reserve and combine it with the unassigned fund balance of 1.87 million, those two reserves represent about 64% of the fiscal 2324 expenditures. I only point this out because the Government Finance Officers Association recommends that the city at a minimum, most cities, all cities, have a minimum of two months' worth of operating expenditures on hand in their general fund reserves. That would be about 17%. Your city has 64%, so the reserves are healthy, which is good. However, when you go to the next slide, you can see that this long-term forecast that I'll show you, the slide right after this, is going to be significantly impacted because of some of the deficits that are projected for the city's general fund without a change in either the expenditure base being decreased or the revenue base being increased or both. So the general fund forecast, which is a long-term forecast in a fiscal model that's used for budgeting purposes, is created as a tool to develop a better understanding of a baseline general fund picture. So what does baseline mean? So baseline basically says when you strip out all of the one-time activity in the general fund, that revenue and expenditures, and you strip all of that out, and you look at exactly what the city is expecting from a service level perspective based on the way services are delivered today, which would mean the level of staff that you have today, the level of discretionary spending that you have today for the programs that you have, the full funding of those, the filling of all positions that it takes, which are the positions that you currently have authorized. If we look at that and extrapolate that out on an ongoing basis for several years, and then with that actually add back conservative assumptions for growth in both the expenditure and the revenue base for those years. So in other words, property tax is going to grow at 3%, sales tax might grow at 2%. You may see static development revenues or development revenues that might decrease. From an expenditure perspective, you have contracts with the unions that are negotiated. All of that information is out of him. You have other inflation, inflationary cost increases for contracts, fuel, et cetera, that especially in California, we're seeing inflation impact things significantly, particularly fuel and insurance costs. When you look at all of that and you extrapolate that out, that becomes your baseline budget for the future. So looking at that and moving to the next slide, you can see exactly what transpires. So in the fourth, the fourth, or fourth column there, I guess, you can see the mid-year budget that's currently being recommended. So that is the use of $765,000 in reserve, which is what that red number represents. That used to be just under a million, so it's now 765 based on some of the things that we just talked about for the general fund changes. When you go back and you look at the two prior years, in fiscal 2122, the city actually put back $272,000 into the general fund. And for 2223, we're anticipating that the city will put back just over $79,000 into the general fund. However, because of some of the reasons that we gave, the city is expected to use 765, particularly the loss of the sales tax and also the significant amount of one-time activity, that $419,000 that actually just went through in that slide. That is why you see the $765,000 use of reserves. But that sustains itself. So when you look at the base budget moving forward, right now, the city does have about a 700,000, between 650 and 700,000 systemic deficit issue. A lot of that deficit issue stems from the fact that the $400,000 loss from the sales tax has not come back. We actually have built in, it's my understanding that there is going to be a used car lot that actually is going to be coming in potentially to that site, that vacant site. So that revenue based on a projection from HDL has been added back. So, but you still have this issue and again, these numbers in the future are predicated on all staff positions that you currently have being filled for the entirety of the year. So to the extent you don't fill some of those positions or you have vacancies at any point in time, those numbers won't be as big as they are. But all of the one-time activity has been stripped out. And then again, also, the, the SRO officer revenue reimbursement is built in for two years. But the, once that revenue goes away, the officer position remains funded as a funded position for the year. Another thing that I mentioned at the outset is that you have these CalPERS unfunded liability costs that are actually going to be going up each year as part of these numbers. So those costs are adding to your future deficits. Over the last couple of years, CalPERS has not met their discount rate, meaning they did not achieve the investment rate that they thought that they would, well, that they would need to keep things normal. The discount rate right now is 6.8%, and they just have not achieved that in the last couple of years. In fact, one of the, two years ago, they actually lost money on their investment portfolio. As a result, this increases the amount of the unfunded liability that accrues to the city that must then be amortized and basically paid for like a mortgage over the next 20 years on an amortization schedule. So that money is added back and the city really doesn't have a choice. It has to pay that one-time cost every year until it's fully amortized out. Part of these big numbers in the, in the big deficits that you see for the future years has those amounts built into it. Next slide. Ultimately, if all of that comes to fruition. Is there a question?
Yeah, one quick question. On the CalPERS, are there any alternative options that protects the retirements but at the same time decreases our, you know, liability or potential liability, some sort of a hedge, in other words?
Yeah, yeah, there's, there's, there's several things you can do. And you can, you can issue, issue what are called pension obligation bonds. And that's probably not recommended at this point. Three, three years ago, it would have been recommended because interest rates were super low. So a number of cities years ago got into pension obligation bonds as a hedge against CalPERS losses and basically fixed the, the rate that they were paying on that debt, that UAL, by paying the UAL off by issuing bonds and then paying a fixed rate on that, like some, some cities got under 2%. So instead of paying what CalPERS misses basically, when they lose money or they don't make the discount rate, you're only paying 2% on that bond. Right now, you know, municipal rates are anywhere between 4% and 5% probably, so it's probably not prudent to look at that right now, but as interest rates might come back down, that would be one way. Another way to, to hedge it is to prepay it. So like a mortgage, when you pay more in principle, when you put more upfront to the, to the principal, the interest you pay ultimately, long-term, will decrease. So the city does have the option of making what's called EDCs, which is additional discretionary contributions to CalPERS to kind of hedge that as well. Outside of that, you know, right now, there's really not a whole lot of flexibility. We just have to wait from year to year to see exactly what happens with CalPERS. In a sidebar conversation I've had with, with a colleague, it's my understanding that at least as of a month ago, CalPERS was on track to make eight point, about eight, still over 8% this year, 8.1%, which would be good. So that would be, you know, 1.3% more than their discount rate and ultimately would go to reduce the UALs in the future. So not by a whole lot, but, but nonetheless, anytime they can achieve 6.8% or something more than that, that's a good, that's good, that's what you want. So it just remains to be seen. Those actuarial reports will be updated in July or August, when they typically come out. So it will be unfortunately after the budget for fiscal 2425 is put together. But CalPERS is something that I monitor pretty closely and follow. And as soon as I get indication on, you know, what their, what their rates are, or actually what their investment return has been so far this year, I'll, I'll make sure that city council knows.
So say hypothetically, there is a pullback on the insurance or on the interest, sorry. What's that line in the sand for you? Like as far as?
What's the what?
What's the line in the sand for you as far as the interest percentage that would, you know, loss interest for the UAL?
You know, I, I think, you know, probably 3% to 3.5%, somewhere right around there. So I think we have at least a year to go before interest rates really start coming down significantly. I'm just not seeing, you know, and inflation, inflation just remains too high at this point and it actually went up last month. So it just, it just depends on exactly, you know, what transpires in the economy. There's a lot of things on the table right now. It's an election year. And a lot of times, there's volatility, economic volatility in an election year, so that may play into this. But, you know, we'll watch it and since you've asked that question, you know, I'll go to, to my bond people and find out, you know, what their expectation is for long-term municipal rates, at least over the next one or two years, to see where they're at. And if it's, if it's somewhere where I think it might be beneficial for the city to start considering something like this, I will let your council know.
Okay, thank you. And one other quick question. So hypothetically, you did the thought experiment, right? Hypothetically, the, the interest, sorry, the stock market pulls back significantly? Obviously, we're on the hook there, right?
Yeah, so the stock market is just one of many things that actually goes into CalPERS' portfolio. So they have a, a very erratic, in my opinion, candidly, investment policy where they do a lot of social investing in things that are political in nature and actually, in some ways, again, in my opinion, compromise the ability to earn the highest yield that they should be earning for their main customers, which are the CalPERS employees that ultimately will receive a retirement, retirees that do receive a retirement, and more importantly, the cities that actually pay for these retirements. So when the stock market, the stock market, I think, represents maybe 30% of what CalPERS is investing their money in. I'm just making that number up, but that's a number I've seen in the past. And when the stock market does go down, then that's when you see CalPERS, you know, have the losses or the interest, achieving, achieving an interest rate less than what the discount rate is.
Are they, are they currently in hard assets or digital assets at all?
I'm not sure. I'm not sure. Yeah, they have a full, if you go on the CalPERS website, they have a full, they discuss their asset objective and their portfolio in, in length. So it's pretty, it's discussed very well there actually on what they invest in.
One last question and I'll get out of your hair.
No problem.
Is there, is there an option besides CalPERS?
Okay, good question. So I actually did look that up just before the meeting. And, you know, right now, your retirement system is CalPERS. To completely get out of CalPERS, which at this point, you know, I wouldn't recommend, it would cost you, and again, this depends on what the discount rate is at the time and, you know, where interest rates are and everything. But CalPERS takes a very conservative approach when you want what's called buyout, the retirement plan, okay? Which means you have to not only pay the unfunded liability, you got to pay everything that they think that it's going to take to pay the existing retirees that have a pension that are currently drawing a pension, that was part of the city of Escalon at some point in time in the past, and those employees that will have a pension that are currently employees in the future. The worst-case scenario right now, and I just looked this up for your miscellaneous and your safety plan, to buy out everything would be about $31 million. So it would cost the city $31 million citywide to do a, basically to buy it out. Now, if discount rates were lower, interest rates were, were, were lower, it wouldn't cost that much. But today, that's what it is. And what you can do aside from that, and, you know, there are cities out there that just have like a 401K plan or some other deferred compensation type plan that, that you can invest in or you can invest in for your employees, for the city. A lot of places do a hybrid. But to, I, I, in 34 years of doing this type of stuff, I haven't seen a city get out of CalPERS yet. It's been discussed, but it just, it turns out to be extremely cost ineffective to do so. And that's just, that's just the nature of the beast.
Okay. Thanks for your, your answers. I appreciate it. I just.
No, that's great. I'm glad you asked all those questions on CalPERS because it's a very important issue.
I just see a runaway train. I'm concerned about the retirements as well as the liability for our citizens, unfortunately. So if there's any of your options on the table, if you don't mind letting us know, that would be greatly appreciated.
Councilor, your, your concerns and your questions are, are shared by many, many other states. I can guarantee you that. Okay, so this is, yes, go ahead.
The, the $31 million you were talking about in the buyout, ultimately, aren't we on the hook for that long-term anyway due to the, the balance that we have to catch up on every year? I mean, we're going to end up paying that at some point anyway, right?
You, yeah. Keep in mind that the buyout is like a right now type thing, okay? So that's why it's so high. Your unfunded liability is actually a little, less than that, okay? So ultimately, over time, yeah, you are going to pay interest on it, but over time, CalPERS has a, an amortization schedule that they work with that is actually updated each year based on what happens each year. And all of these amortization tables are built into the actuarial reports. And I, I will send the city manager a link that you're, that she can send to all of you that has this information in it. And, you know, it's, it's not the most exciting reading in the world, but, but there are some really good pages with information that discuss what your funded status is for your plans. And you do have miscellaneous and safety, and you have both classic and PEPRA plans. And you also have a tier-two plan for your safety. And, but it talks about, you know, what your funded status is in all of those plans. It talks about what the buyout is, talks about all of the things that make up your unfunded liability over the number of years that it has accrued. And keep in mind that some years, you actually get a reduction in the unfunded liability because CalPERS may have beat their investment objective in that particular year. So that's actually a plus, takes away from the unfunded liability. But like most cities. But like most cities, your city does have an unfunded liability that remains to be amortized. But, yeah, I mean, ultimately, you're going to be paying, over time, close to that amount anyway, once the whole twenty years elapses. That's going to mean nothing else changes between now and then.
Yeah, it seems like they have a real way of keeping you on the hook there. Assuming that thirty-one million dollars stays an unfunded liability, any, any potential downturn in the market or their investments or poor fiscal decisions by the state of California could really expand that number over the next decade. Is that correct?
Yeah, I mean, they, yeah, it's not the state of California that's making these investments.
CalPERS, I'm sorry.
It's, it's actually the CalPERS Board, which is an autonomous entity outside of the state. So it's.
It was.
The CalPERS Board and the direction that they're actually giving the, the staff, basically, the investment group that actually makes these investments. So that's where it's coming from.
If that, say hypothetically, you were able to buy out that thirty-one million and we went to a 401K, would that affect the retirements in a negative way? Or would that, I mean, if, assuming you had apples to apples on your investments?
Yeah, and I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to kind of guess on this answer, but I'll guess based on, you know, what I understand about what makes up that thirty-one million. That thirty-one million is a worst-case scenario, okay? And it's so high because it, it, CalPERS does certain things where they, where they want you to buy out because they do want to keep everything unchanged through the entirety of what remains today in your pension plan. So like I said, it assumes that all the people that have earned what they've earned up to this point, all the people that are in the plan today, all the people that have already retired, nothing will change for them up to the point that you, that you terminate the plan, all right? So they will, everything will remain, they'll continue to get what they expected up to that point, and this is just the cost for CalPERS to provide that well into the future. So they're assuming that, you know, they're not going to make their discount rate every year because it fluctuates, all right? So when you actually do that buyout, they're going to discount the discount and charge you more as a result so that they can make sure that they've got enough money in the pot to keep everybody whole, basically.
I guess in plain English, like, if this, you did that, how would that affect the workers here as far as their retirement? In other words, would they still have a, a retirement? I mean, in other words, the 401K, are they going to get less money potentially in their retirement? Or would it be, I guess what I'm getting at is?
Yeah, that just depends on, you know, what, 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 that depends on the city and ultimately what the city provides.
Okay, gotcha. So it could stay the same in theory.
Right now, every, every CalPERS member is, well, the PEPRA folks are two percent at sixty-two, okay? So when they turn sixty-two, they're going to get two percent a year. They make fifty thousand dollars a year, all right? Two percent of fifty thousand dollars is, what is that, five hundred, that's a thousand dollars for every year. So if they work ten years, that's ten thousand dollars, all right? So that ten thousand dollars they're going to get every year for as long as they live. A 401K plan is typically a defined benefit, defined contribution plan where you can only draw out what you put in, all right? Unlike the defined benefit plan, the CalPERS is where you're going to get something for life. So it just depends on what, how the city decides to structure something other than a defined benefit plan. And, you know, that, that could be costly, which is why CalPERS is so costly because of the type of benefit that it provides.
Okay. And one, one last thing is the, so in theory, could you pay that off? If the interest rates pulled back, you could issue a bond for thirty-one million? Is that?
Yeah, your bond, your bond, your bond would be less than that. But if, I mean, but if you wanted to, that's a good question. So you, you want to buy everything out and you may need to issue a bond to do that.
Well, I'm just looking at trying to, like, how do we hedge this runaway train potentially?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's our biggest financial.
Yeah, that's it.
I don't want to hurt the workers at all, but I also want to look at, you know, what kind of option there is on the table to?
Yeah, I haven't, I haven't been asked that before. Let, let me look into that. And you're asking, you guys are asking a great question. So let me look into that and see if there's an alter, if there's something, that that's something that can be done.
Okay, thank you.
You bet. All right. So again, this, this slide here just looks at reserves. So this just talks, the, the blue bar is your thirty-three percent policy reserve. So I leave that unchanged, but you can see that if you do have those deficits of six or seven hundred thousand dollars each year, meaning nothing changes, which we would never recommend, but from a baseline perspective, this is what we have to show. If you do use the six or seven hundred thousand dollars each year, you can see that orange bar becomes less and less each year. And ultimately, it becomes negative, which means you're eating into the blue bar in those out three years. Okay, next slide. All right, so I'm going to real quickly now go through the enterprise funds. So these are, this is your array of your water enterprise fund. So there are six funds that make up the water fund. The revenues are budgeted at six point four eight million, expenditures are budgeted at eight point five million. At the end of the day, assuming we do spend six point four million, that we bring in six point four million and eight point five, you will still have just under four point two million dollars remaining in your fund balance and the water funds combined. The proposed use of working capital for the year, otherwise the difference between the eight point five million expenditures and the money that's coming in of six point five million, anticipating a use of about two million dollars, and that's because you have a capital program in the water fund for four point four. So through the next slide, you can see what that capital program is made up of. For, you have a generator upgrade for the well site. We actually added some additional funding for expenditure to the well one A design work, so just under three million dollars there. A lot of that is funded by a state loan that should be received. And then we also added, the water valve replacement and the water line replacement didn't change, but the surface water project for six hundred thousand dollars was added to the city's water capital projects. Four point four million in there. Moving on to the next slide. For the sewer fund, you can see that there are eight funds that make up all of the sewer activity, where you have both industrial and municipal sewer activity rolling into the global enterprise that is sewer and wastewater. Five point seven million dollars in revenues, offset by nine point five million expenditures. So we're actually using just under three point eight million dollars working capital, assuming this budget comes to fruition. If we do that and do all that capital work, a lot of which, by the way, carries over into the, even the next year, but, you know, you always want to budget what you think is going to happen, but a lot of times, some of that carries over. But assuming we do spend four point eight million dollars in capital and ultimately the five point five million that's budgeted, you will still have three point three million dollars in the sewer fund, the global sewer fund, at the end of the day. On the next slide, you can see what the capital is made up of, and this did not change from the adopted budget, just under four point eight million dollars per capital for things like areas and pumps, facility expansion at the wastewater treatment facility, pond improvements, McHenry trunk line rehabilitation, two point six million, McHenry controllers, energy project for solar, and then Kerrigan lift station improvements for seven hundred and seventy-five thousand. Next slide. Stormwater. So this is the city's stormwater fund. So there's two funds that make this up. You have an operations fund and a capital fund. Two hundred and forty-four thousand in revenues, offset by three hundred and seventeen thousand expenditures. At the end of the day, have about three hundred and forty-three thousand remaining in that fund. You have only one capital project there for telemetry upgrades, SSGIP, for thirty thousand five hundred dollars in stormwater. Next slide.
A quick question on that.
Transit fund?
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
That stormwater, if you go back real quick, I'm sorry, that, that, let's see, three hundred and forty-three thousand can, for the stormwater, can that be used for repairing a generator hypothetically, like in, in a lift station? Or a stormwater, stormwater lift station?
I think, I think if there's a nexus to the stormwater system itself, yes. I mean, if, if that lift station is used for something other than stormwater, then you probably can't use stormwater for all of it. But if you do have lift stations that are just solely for stormwater and stormwater activities, I, I don't know why you wouldn't be able to use, use that money for, for that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, you bet. Okay, and the transit fund. So we originally budgeted five hundred and seventy-nine thousand in revenue with the adopted budget and four hundred and eighty-five thousand expenditures. We're increasing revenue in the transit fund by about eleven thousand dollars. And that is just because we actually received some state transit assistance money that came in. And then expenditures are being reduced very slightly due to, again, adjusting staffing costs that are ultimately anticipated through the end of the year. Assuming these changes come to fruition and the adopted budget comes to fruition, the transit fund will still have about eighty-five thousand dollars remaining in it, and that can only be used for transit-related activities to the city. Next slide. And go through the city transportation fund. So this is your transportation fund, which essentially receives the city's allocation of transportation development authority or local transportation funding that's received annually, particularly when audits are done, and can be used only for transportation-related purposes. So with the adopted budget, we anticipated three hundred and seventeen coming in with no expenditures that were budgeted for transportation. As we have updated, this for the mid-year, we actually have an increase in revenue to six hundred and five thousand, and this is basically the LTF, TDA money that has been received, and higher interest rates, higher interest earnings also that have accrued to that fund because of its large fund balance. So about two hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars being added to revenue there. And you can see that we've actually added a significant capital project to this fund for just under two point one million dollars that will basically use the majority of the fund balance in the transportation fund. That two point oh six million is for pavement restoration, five hundred and thirty-three thousand there, and then the Dent Elementary School area sidewalk project, just over one point five million there. Assuming we do both of those projects with these funds that have been received, you will still have just over two hundred and forty-five thousand dollars remaining in the transportation fund by the end of the year. Next slide. This is your regional transportation impact fees. Keep in mind that impact fees can only be used for nexus-related purposes associated with the collection of the fee itself through AB sixteen hundred. The adopted budget, assume twelve thousand five hundred in revenue, looks like we're going to get about eighteen thousand by the end of the year. And this is just based on interest earnings because that does have a reasonably considerable fund balance in it. There are, at this point in time, no expenditure budgeted for use from the regional transportation impact fee. And again, these fees can only be used for specific purposes associated with the nexus study for collection of that fee. Assuming we do bring in that eighteen thousand and spend nothing, you'll have just over three hundred and ninety-one thousand in fund balance at the end of the year. Next slide. Traffic congestion fund. These funds are also used for traffic slash transportation-related purposes, very minor revenue adjustment there to account for a little bit more interest, and we are adding ninety-one thousand dollars in expenditures to use the vast majority of the funds available in traffic congestion for part of the pavement restoration program, ninety-one thousand there. So assuming we spend that ninety-one thousand dollars out of this fund, we'll just have just over a thousand dollars left by the end of the year. Next slide. Traffic safety fund. So this is money that comes in every year and for traffic safety, move its fine money, things like that. Twenty-one thousand in revenue unchanged, twenty thousand in expenditures unchanged. So really no change in the budget. And these annual revenues are collected, are transferred actually to the general fund to offset related costs in the general fund. So money that comes in basically is transferred out, but you, we'll still have about thirty-one thousand dollars in that fund that can be used for traffic safety or transportation with other purposes. Next slide. Measure K. This is a very fluid fund. And you can see here that when we actually adopted the budget, we anticipated seven hundred and ninety-three thousand in revenue, offset by five point two million in expenditures, really not knowing where or how much Measure K money was available or whether or not the city would receive it. We set the budget from an appropriation perspective at about five point two million dollars high because those were all the things that were allocated in the city's CIP, fourth to twenty-three, twenty-four, that were going to be funded by Measure K. As we've gone through and updated the budget in mid-year, you can see that now have three point nine million in revenue, offset by five point eight million in expenditures. So the revenue adjustment is three point one million, and that basically accounts for ultimately the amount of Measure K that would be required to offset the array of expenditures that are in the Measure K fund. So for the Measure K fund, you can see expenditures are increasing by six hundred thousand dollars, and that is for one project, which is for the State Route one twenty Brennan intersection project that's funded by STBG, the state transportation block grant. That's not part of Measure K, that's an ancillary source that is actually funded as part of this fund from a transportation perspective. We just put it in this fund. So the Measure K out amount is, you know, about, still about five point two million from an expenditure perspective, and then you have another six hundred thousand being spent from the expected SCBG funding for that project I just mentioned. There are other additional projects that were discussed at mid-year that are likely to be funded by Measure K, to the extent Measure K funding is available, and they include the McHenry Crossing striping and pedestrian refuge island for fifty thousand dollars and the traffic calming program for forty thousand dollars. So they're not specifically appropriated here, however, to the extent those funds become available and those projects can be undertaken, that would come back to your city council for consideration or ultimate approval once that funding has been secured. Next slide, please. Finally, in the gas tax fund, for transportation funds, you can see that we're increasing gas tax fund by just over thirteen thousand dollars. Not a big change there, and that's just the revenues have been updated, consistent with information that's actually provided by Michael Coleman, who's a consultant with the League of California Cities, who puts out periodic updates of gas tax receipts, et cetera, that are expected for all cities in California, and has been doing so for years. So I updated this consistent with his forecasting. And then no changes in expenditures. Expenditures are not recommended increase, still account for two trucks that are being paid for by gas tax, ninety thousand dollars there, and then a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar transfer to the general fund to offset general fund-related streets costs, applicable costs, and then the balance for streets and sidewalks for the capital projects. Assuming we spend all that money, nine hundred and seventeen thousand, and bring it to four thirteen, you will still have seven hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars in the gas tax fund. That should say projected gas tax fund balance by the end of the year, which can be used for pretty much any street-related slash transportation-related purpose, similar to a lot of the other funds we've discussed in the last few slides. Next slide. Okay, last fund. Okay, last fund is the COPS supplemental law enforcement fund, and this is money that's received through AB 3229 COPS funding, that's received by most cities across California, specifically for police-related activities. You can see that I have adjusted that upward from a revenue perspective by about $12,000, and that increase is basically based on what we received last year with a small growth factor. Typically, you don't ever receive anything less than you received in the previous year, so we're comfortable adding that money back. And then expenditures grow by $36,000 to 184,000, and that growth is for just expenditures that have been increased for police-related expenditures and then annual transfer to the general fund in the amount of $8,500. So, it's important to note that this fund is, the money comes into this fund every year and can only be used for streets or for police-related purposes. These are COPS that would otherwise be borne by the city's general fund. So having this fund set aside specifically for the police department is a good thing, and it's there, and ultimately, at the end of the day, and that should say projected COPS fund balance on 6324, you will still have $62,400 in that fund for future, for the future years. Next slide. All right, FISCO 2425 budget development, so just some of the things that we'll be talking about as we start to put together the budget with the, well, with the city council, with the public, and then ultimately with all the staff, is continuing to watch the economy and really monitor it closely and update that forecast that I've showed you an update for tonight. You know, the forecast is pretty easy update, looks at every line item in the city's general fund, and given that the general fund is the city's largest fund, and arguably the most important fund, in terms of providing discretionary activity at the purview of your city council, we really need to make sure that we're following that and as are, and are as accurate as possible with what we're expecting for the future. Calpers investment returns and unfunded liability payments. We've spent a lot of time, thankfully, discussing that tonight, and this is a very prevalent topic as we move forward into the 2425 budget, and watching this closely will be very key. So we'll be doing that. Also need to monitor insurance costs. One thing I'm seeing is that insurance costs, particularly general liability and property insurance, seems to be rising significantly everywhere in California. So, want to pay very close attention to what the city ultimately is paying for insurance, what our limits are, and those sorts of things, to really monitor what's going out in terms of funding for insurance. We need to review the entire budget to determine its ability to provide base level, a base level of services with ongoing base revenues. In a very brief conversation I've had with city manager and Jalen, we really need to look at each individual department, each individual line, and really understand what the value is that's being added back to the city, and how it is providing some of the priorities that your council has directed in terms of services that are provided to the community. So as we put the budget together this year, we'll be, we'll be looking very closely at some of the, at some of the items that make up each department's budget, and bring back something for you to consider before July 1st. And then obviously, the ability to sustain a desired level of service. That desired level of service today is defined by the budget that you have, and, you know, whatever that desired level of service ultimately ends up being, we need to find a way to fund that and bring back to you, the city council, and the public, a balanced budget, hopefully, where we have something that is sustainable long-term. Next slide. And that is it. So with that, I will stop. I think all of the staff is there to address any questions, additional questions or comments that your city council might have, but what we're looking for tonight is just approval of the FISCO 2324 mid-year adjustments for the city of Escalante.
All right, let's open up to the council level here. Any questions that we didn't address as we were going through the presentation we'd like to ask at this point?
I just have one. Going back, I hate to beat a dead horse, but going back to this unfunded liabilities and that first hedge option that you gave us, can we buy down the rate?
What do you mean, buy down the rate?
Like some, some bonds, you can pay some upfront to bring the interest rate potentially down?
Oh, like put a, put a big down payment or something like that? I'm not sure. I'd have to talk to the advisors that I work with to see what options might be available to them.
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
Just have a comment. Obviously, Andy, the Calpers issue is a very sensitive topic for not only this council but for the city and cities across California. So, as we continue to work together, if there are suggestions, alternatives, recommendations, whatever adjective you want to use, I highly encourage you to consider coming back and explaining all those options to council, because obviously, it's a sensitive issue related to the budget and the financial stability for the city.
Any other questions here at the council at this point? At this point, we'll open up to the folks in the room if they've got any questions or concerns with our mid-year budget approval process here tonight.
Just a couple of things. Andy, good job. It's nice to have a professional doing these kind of things, finally. The, this is just an overview. If you go through and read what he actually...
I'm, I'm back, by the way. I'm sorry, I got disconnected. I'm back. Sorry about that.
We're good?
Yeah. You had to call back in.
We're live, okay. In your revenue projections, on the special assessment districts, you showed the in lieu funds being at, you know, $838,000, and there's not that much money in that fund because it was taken out in an intra-fund loan. There's, you know, $63,000, $67,000 in there. How do you explain that?
Which fund are you talking about?
Okay, this would be the in lieu fund. In the treasury reports, it comes as a line item for the, I guess, the, the in lieu funds for development, for housing, where contractors, you know, pay in rather than build low to moderate income housing.
That's the loan, Andy, that you borrowed for the building?
The, the loan, oh, the internal loan?
Yeah, to, to pay off for the, the building facility here, out of the housing in lieu.
Yeah, there's actually, there's actually a schedule that is part of this, part of the deal in the back. So the last page of the, of the item talks about the library development impact fee and the city hall development impact funds that actually owe money.
We're on different pages here.
To the other funds.
We're not talking about the library or the city hall.
Yeah, I, these, these funds were not updated, so I need to look at, you know, ultimately, what interest is being charged and how these funds were going to pay back over time the money. Ultimately, it would have been impact fees that would have been collected. To the extent the city cannot collect, for example, in the city hall development impact fee, just under $3 million, which would take a lot of time, and a lot of, a lot of development to actually pay these things back, somebody, some funds are going to be on the hook for that. So, at the end of the day, it may become the general fund that's on the hook, but that has not been considered as, as part of the mid-year at this point.
Okay, well, that's not my question, but thank you for at least trying to take a shot at that, because the city will never pay that back. We're well over halfway through the 20-year loan that was taken out for the community center and city hall. The question is, you populated in the budget, mid-year budget, for the in lieu fees being at $838,000, something of that nature. Do you, can you see that?
Yeah, that's, that's not, that is not this in lieu fee. That in lieu fee is actually a property tax that is collected in lieu of the vehicle license fee.
No.
Okay, and that date back...
We're having a hard time communicating here. We're talking about housing, okay? In lieu housing. So when you have your special...
Where, where, where do you see the in lieu housing fee?
Okay, you went through the, in, in the budget, you did all your enterprise reports. Following that was the special fund, if you will, that, that listed the in lieu housing fund.
They have multiple inter-fund...
And I don't have it in front of me, so I'm going by memory here.
It's on the screen now. 1201.
Where did I talk about the in lieu housing funds?
It's Fund 201.
It wasn't in your presentation. It was on page 170 of the agenda packet. It's on the screen currently.
The last page of your special revenue funds section, which is page 170 of the agenda. We have it up on the, on the screen.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Okay, so that $833,000 is the amount that is actually owed to the low-income housing fund from the city hall development impact fee fund, Fund 209. So that $833,000 was loaned from the low-income housing fund to Fund 209 to pay for the city hall.
Okay, well, the question is, is that, is that looked at as revenue?
312,000? No, that's just the, that's the loan amount. That's what's outstanding. So, if you look at the top of the, top of the line, it says estimated amount owed as of 712023.
Ode, okay.
And so this page is called inter-fund loans payable, so he's giving a listing of loans.
I'm sorry.
All right. Yeah, well, I don't expect that to ever get paid back, revenues being what they are for the city in the foreseeable future.
Yeah, like, like I mentioned, it would take a significant amount of development to generate city hall development impact fees of $3 million to not just pay back the low-income housing fund, but the public works impact fee and the transportation impact fee fund as well.
At what point, Andy, do you think a moratorium on spending might be appropriate for the city, looking forward to curtail some of these major losses and going into the red column here in four or five years?
That's a policy question for the council. I wouldn't be prepared to answer that at this point.
I can tell you, as mayor, I'm currently expecting to see a budget that comes in.
Well, I was just curious, if you, if you thought...
Without a negative to the general fund.
...in your, in your travels, is there a line where cities should entertain those kind of serious drastic steps in order to avoid going insolvent?
I, I believe that the model that we put together, the forecast that we put together, provides a tool for the council to discern what that line might be in the future. I mean, right now, if you're talking about sustaining a line that indicates that you have between $600,000 and $700,000 that you're using each year, I would never recommend that, okay? Which is why I put this forecast before cities like yours, where there's a number of things that go into the use of $600,000, $600,000 or $700,000 each year, so that you can look at what it might take to reduce expenditures and/or, you know, augment revenues in some way to mitigate that use of $600,000 or $700,000 bucks. But I would never recommend adopting a budget that would show something like it's showing right now.
Well, yeah, it's, I think it just points out the importance of being careful of every single dollar we spend and really scrutinizing whether we really need to do any of these things going forward for the next five years. I, I think you'd start out with the thought, why not not do it, and then have reasons for why to do it. Is it life safety? Is it, you know, economic ROI for the city if we go spend this kind of money, those kind of things? So, I just wanted to say, I thought you did a good job. Thank you for pointing out that. I keep my eye on that, and I keep my eye on the debt service for these two last buildings here, because at one point, they almost made us insolvent back in 2013, and it was a last-minute brush that refinanced our loans to keep the city afloat. Thank you.
You bet.
Anybody else in chambers or online? Hearing nobody else wanting to ask any more questions, I'll bring it back to council for possible motion.
So, before we take a motion, Andy, you just, you were disconnected from online. I, I said that...
Yeah, I'm sorry about that.
No problem. Got to love technology. I was just stating that...
Are you there?
Obviously, you heard from the council.
No, I'm not hearing you now.
Maybe I should just keep quiet.
My phone's on, but...
Can you hear us now, Andy?
I think we might have lost him.
If you guys can hear me, I can't hear you.
We can hear you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the mid-year budget and make sure that staff is fully aware of the sensitive sensitivities, and if you, someone could relate to Andy about reviewing all options related to Calpers and the unfunded liability. But my motion is to accept the mid-year budget as presented by Andy.
We have a second to that motion.
I would second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Before we start on item number nine, that was a quite meaty topic there, I'd like to take a, what, a five-minute bathroom break, if you guys don't mind? Five to seven minutes or so, we'll be back shortly, and we'll be back at you.
We are not necessarily getting money every year. Our TIF is regional transportation impact fees. It is a program run by S J cog to fund the larger roadways. The city at this time does not have a transportation facility, think 120, that is currently deficit, that currently has too much traffic congestion. So we're not receiving funding every year, but we do have a pretty sizable fund balance. And then traffic congestion is a former state funding source. That has been defunct since 2017, but we do have some leftover funding in that fund. So those are the eight total funding sources of which the city receives annually six of those. So before you hear, not in any order, not numbered, you can tell, just bullet pointed, are some of the projects that we are either working on or want direction from the council to work on. So the first one, we have discussed in the past, but it's the 2024 pavement restoration project. The intent here is actually presented about a month ago by Justin Collins. The idea here is to improve the condition of the pavement around town, to spend upwards of a couple hundred thousand or more each year to either crack seal in one year or micro surface in the next year, roads throughout town and maintain a schedule. I can share with you pavement like that lasts about five to seven years. If you can stay on that schedule, you're getting a much better bang for your buck. If it gets into a worse and worse condition, you're spending two to four times as much as it gets to a worse condition. So the more on top of it we can stay, the more inexpensive it's going to be and the easier the fixes are going to be. So the 2024 pavement restoration project, and we plan to have a 2025, a 2026, 2027, if that's council's direction. The second bullet point here, we have received a number of comments, concerns from the public about the safety at McHenry Escalon Balota Crossing, in particular in two locations, one at the high school football fields Friday nights and other times throughout the year. In fact, I had a staff member going over the weekend saying there was people crossing from the church to the ball fields because they were playing soccer or something. So it happens throughout the year. So at the high school, when people park at the church and cross the road there to get to the high school football games or any use of the field. And then the other one is in front of Heritage House, adjacent to, across the street from the community center. So really looking at two different improvements there. One at the high school is a pedestrian safety zone. So what it would look like is a center island. It's actually a concrete island with a curb, you know, six to eight inches, so that someone crossing could have a safe spot midway through the crossing. If they were older or if there was a lot of traffic, they could get to a safe spot midway and then cross the rest of it. So you break it up a little bit and provide additional safety. And the other one in front of Heritage House is improved signage, brighter signage for the seniors and others who may be crossing in that location. The third one, we receive a number of comments about lack of sidewalks throughout town. In fact, we had that discussion two weeks ago at council. We wanted to first focus at school sites, around school sites. So going a couple blocks in each direction around the schools and looking at infilling the areas that do not currently have sidewalks. So you can see here about a cost of 1.53 million. It's a sizable project. I will share with you, this will also be a political project because, you know, people have been used to their yards in a certain way. They may have planted, you know, certain landscaping or had grass. We will be going in if council approves and removing perhaps some of that, excuse me, some of that, some of that grass, some of that landscaping. And so there will be potentially, let me grab some water, there'll potentially be some residents who object to the project. So this is why we want to get out early. If we do end up moving forward with this project, we have had our engineer start to look at the areas of difficulty. And what we'd like to do, we'd bring a plan back to the council to start talking about kind of a public outreach effort, whether we have community meetings or go, you know, sort of door to door in some of the difficult areas for this project. The fourth item, another one we hear a lot about is the 120 Brennan intersection and a potential signalization or some traffic control there. This is a very large project. Caltrans has quoted this project at between four to six million. Your average intersection is 700,000 to a million. They have indicated it's that much because of the railroad right of way and some of the difficulties around the railroad. It's also, will take several years. And so what we can do, if we choose, using some of our transportation funding is do some of the preliminary work. This is a Caltrans facility, is ultimately primarily their responsibility, but we can do some of the preliminary work, preliminary design, preliminary environmental, get it to a more shovel ready state and hopefully receive additional opportunities for funding there. The next one that has been on the books for some time is a widening on McHenry from Jones to Narcissus. The county, as you know, widened the and improved the bridge south of, south of where the bridge is at the river. Just forgetting that, is that River Road? Okay, at River, south of River Road. The next section is a portion of the county and then the city to widen to four lanes, if that is so chosen. And then like we are doing with Val de Peña on Irwin Avenue, there would be, one of the proposals is a waterline replacement and street reconstruction project. So those are kind of the projects that have been in and around the radar. Again, we think we can complete with the availability of staff and our engineering firm, probably four projects, maybe five. We certainly don't want to over promise and under deliver. So that is the gist of the discussion today. Wanted to introduce this topic. If it was the council's purview, could, you know, sit, think about it for a bit or provide direction to council tonight if you felt comfortable.
May I ask a question about?
Of course.
So the McHenry widening, question is if the county has expressed moving forward with their widening from River Road to town north of Joe, or north of River Road.
We talked to a county representative about two weeks ago and they said, paraphrasing, if we were to move forward, they would get theirs in line with us.
I'm in no hurry to speed up the racetrack that's coming from the south over the north. I'm not interested in spending our city money on widening that road until we are forced, myself, personal opinion, because going down to one lane slows you down as we get down to that 45 and that 40 zone coming into town. It's already a racetrack leaving town going south with the four lanes when we go down to two. But if we narrow it to two coming into town, we can maintain some speed control, in my opinion. You open up to five lanes, it's racetrack. It's going to be brutally bad for anybody trying to get in out of those roads.
What it also encourages, if mean if that master plan in Stanislaw County takes off at Riverbank, it's also encouraging.
Commuting through our town.
All of those traffic, all that traffic to just come through Escalon.
I'd like it to stay a pinch point until we have, you know, a lot, a lot of surplus money in our budget to even consider it. I think this is the bottom of the list for me, to even even put it on the list. I think we should take it off. I don't, I don't know.
I have.
We can leave the choke for traffic citation.
Traffic litigation.
I think we definitely still want to see some more of that. I noticed that on the previous pages prior to, it showed the funds, the balances and budgeting. So back 170 into the 160s. I think with your statement that we could potentially cover four to five of these projects, it would be advantageous to take a look at each one of those funds and figure out how we best utilize each fund without leaving balances so that we can complete as many of those projects as possible. So I think that sits it back into your hands there, Jalen.
Yes.
To tell us, give us options with those four or five, which, which make the most sense fiscally and enable us to pursue the additional funds that come every year to follow up, kind of as you were talking about at the beginning of your presentation.
I think that's a really good call out, good thought. We do have enough flexibility at this time across the funding sources with the fund balances to cover any one of these projects should the council so choose. As we start to use some of the available fund balances and we're just looking at what we receive annually, we will absolutely make recommendations as we, as we come forward on what is the best use of funding.
Mr. Mayor, I have a couple of comments slash questions. If council member Ingalls finished.
Yeah, I'm done.
So I am 100% in agreement with you that the McHenry widening is probably priority number 65 moving forward. As far as the sidewalks for Dent Elementary, do we have any sort of map that shows what, what scope or what streets are involved in that project, proposed project?
Yeah, we internally are looking at that. We didn't want to bring it forward tonight in case it wasn't the direction of the council. But if you think about it, it's a couple blocks in each direction of the school. I mean, that, that's really the, the goal. Now, there's areas throughout town that do not have sidewalks. An idea, start with Dent, El Portel, high school next, and then look at the balance of the city.
For that particular one, could there be an opportunity where we could apply for a safe route to schools funding and get a grant to offset that 1.5 million?
Yes, absolutely.
Because, I mean, if, if the grant opportunities are there, I think that's something that we look at, but also we, we owe it to the school kids as well. I mean, Councilor Walker's been talking ever since you got on council, how important sidewalks are for the students. So I think that's a pretty big priority.
Can I just touch on that comment? Because staff has had that internal dialogue as well. There is something absolutely to sort of, you know, waiting or ensuring we have other monies. The fear is waiting sort of indefinitely, right? Until we are successful in a grant, which, you know, we're not always going to be successful. You know, just, just waiting too long. And so we want to blend of mix, use some of the fund balances that we have for appropriate sources and then try to obtain, you know, grant funding. So we can keep, you know, kind of coal in the fire, right? We can keep.
I'm not saying wait until we get safer out, if we apply for, excuse me, receive safe route to school funding to start this project, but it might be an opportunity where we pay ourselves back. So similar to the mayor's comment about the racetrack, otherwise known as McHenry, from Narcissus to Jones, I kind of want to throw this out to the council regarding the McHenry striping. So I guess my question to the council is how serious are we to slow down traffic on this area of McHenry? I guess where I'm going with this is it seems like every Friday night, and interim chief, you can certainly speak to this, there are always people that are commenting that there's always near misses or people going flying through any sort of crossing that we have. And yes, on that side of McHenry, there is a large volume of traffic. But we really want to slow down vehicles. Do we want to consider not just striping a pedestrian crosswalk, but putting in some sort of other safety measure? Even if it's just elevated from the surface of the street, a walkway across that area for the, for the public to be able to walk across? I'm saying not just striping it, but something to physically slow cars down from going across McHenry.
What location are we talking about for crossing?
Across the, from the street or from the church.
Oh, on Escalon Balota, sorry. Okay. I see you're saying McHenry, like, I don't know a place where we'd have a crosswalk across there.
No, I just was referring to McHenry because it's this, that's the.
Oh, okay.
McHenry Crossing striping.
Gotcha, all right.
Because, I mean, I, so, and speaking with staff, yeah, we're looking at roughly 2 million vehicles that go across that, go through that intersection a year. And everybody knows that it's a major thoroughfare. But if we're serious about slowing vehicles down, will striping suffice? Or should we look at taking a little bit more effort and working with our friends at the school district and creating an even bigger deterrent for speeding in that area on McHenry? Because everybody knows what, what's the speed limit there? 45?
30.
And on average.
There's our speeder.
People are passing us going, people are passing us going 60. I mean, I think that's a serious question that we need to look at. Yeah, striping does one thing, but is there something else that we could look at to really slow vehicles down there?
Yeah, Mayor.
Sure.
So I'm, I like both of the pedestrian projects on this, both the sidewalk pedestrians around the elementary school and then also this one. It is one of the higher, it's dangerous, especially during Babe Ruth and people are trying to get extra parking and you have kids crossing all day and all of that. It does say that it would be creating a center median to provide the safe space, but Escalon does creep up on you, whether, it doesn't matter which way you're coming from, it hits you. And so you're going either down McHenry, Escalon Balota, or 120. You're coming, you know, at 55 and it just hits you. So I would like to see at least reflectors, if we can do that, but, or a blinking light, something just at least for people to see that Escalon is coming up fast. And then that way it gives people a chance to slow down. But that is something to explore in that part of the project. But if nothing else, the space project is, is great. Forward, I like to explore that one.
I did have one other suggestion for the council's consideration. And that is the restoration of the crosswalk at Elizabeth and 120 that our friends at Caltrans were so kind to rip out and not replace during their, shall we say, less than stellar resurfacing project last year. I think the council is aware, but they ripped it out and they refused to restore it because they're saying that it's not to code and they have a different system. But they don't want to contribute any funds to allow for something to be put back in its place. I mean, when Orlando's came in, that's increasing volume at that intersection. Everybody from the north side of Elizabeth wants to cross and go to the south side and go to the De Bonis Shopping Center. And if this project with the two commercial lots and multifamily housing, that's even more increased volume. And one of the things that I was looking at, and Jalen, you're aware, we've been talking about this now for, oh, probably as long as I've known you. But that is a major crossing across 120 and the flashing caution lights sometimes just don't seem to work. People just go flying through that crosswalk. One of the things I would suggest is that we look at what's called a HAWK system, H A W K. And that is a crosswalk system similar to what they have in Ripon. And then they also have it on, in Oakdale on F Street where the signals, it's, it's triggered, but it uses overhead signals and literally there's a signal light that forces traffic to stop. It's two red lights, so it blinks to warn people you're about to stop. And then it turns red and forces traffic to stop. That HAWK system is roughly about 400,000 between 4 and 475. But that is one of our busiest crossings, at least in my opinion, throughout the city. So if we don't want to look at the HAWK system, I think we definitely need to look at some sort of restoration of that crosswalk.
Definitely in conjunction with Caltrans because they may or may not allow that on that road. Looking at what we're allowed to do, but also with that new development, how does that tie in if they change? There was talk of taking more lanes out for a turning lane to go on to Elizabeth into that development and move the road to the north with another lane, which may dictate changes on how we do that crosswalk. I think that's a lot of consideration on all of those parks and before that project goes in and where that lands with Caltrans's decision and if they have to make that turn lane or not.
So you're proposing a, a new, a different project?
Yes, that's a new, that's a new project that's not on our list, but Caltrans is refusing to, refusing to do any sort of restoration of that crosswalk. And, I mean, every time I cross there, some vehicles pay attention to it, other just completely go flying through the intersection. So just for council's consideration.
I think the pavement restoration project is key and has to be on this list to continue to maintain our roads at a most efficient manner and cost effective manner. There's no way we can mess with that project whatsoever, in my opinion. That one's definitely something that we have to consider on an annual basis to make sure we're keeping them up as, as cost effectively that we can. Sidewalks, crossings, those are the main ones. I mean, we have to analyze where our money's going to go and when we run out. That's something that you'll have to dial down a little bit farther with this, obviously.
Yeah. I'm sorry, go ahead, David.
I was just going to say, I would support, you know, four out of these, for sure. The only ones that would be questionable for me would be the one you've already brought up. And then the one where we'd put money in potentially, I'm not quite sure how that looks. If that really, does that really speed up the process? I mean, I know it would speed up the process when Caltrans decides to, you know, do something, but.
Brennan 120?
Yeah, the Brennan 120 project, like, would it actually really speed them up? Or are we just going to put money there and then be waiting and waiting still? You know, because that, that seems to me like it may not necessarily be a productive direction short term.
That was exactly going to be my question, is that are we spending $500,000 to do Caltrans job for them?
The other four, I'd be behind.
I've had some conversations with them and S J cog about that intersection and Caltrans is going to expect us to have some skin in the game. It's in some form, one way or another. I'm not sure at this point it's necessary for us to throw money in there. And it is a congestion relief fund. I'm not sure if that would apply to any of the other projects we got rule on there, if that money's going to sit there or not. I guess that'd be the question, once you analyze all these funds. If we didn't attach that Brennan 120, does that help relieve some issues we have with our pavement restoration or any of the other projects we're all kind of keying up on right now? I mean.
Yeah, I would say funding right now isn't the concern. It's, it's more staff availability, design, engineering, construction management of the projects right now. But over the years, right, we're going to burn through those fund balances and then it starts to become more of an issue. You know, and then the question on 120 and Brennan and are we doing Caltrans's work? I think you're right, Mayor. There will be an expectation of some skin in the game. I think this would further the project along. It could help it move quicker, but there's no guarantee. So I would share that concern, but this is a step in the right direction.
I guess what I'd want to do is go forward with a four, kick out the widening project and then go ahead and have a direct conversation with Caltrans and say, hey, we'll come to the table with 500,000, get this going if you will commit to a timeframe, to a timeline.
The other thing is if we do have that $500,000 for this project, not that I want to spend it, depends on where else we possibly could, but if we have to have skin in the game, spending it now versus later, cost of money, everything with inflation is going up and up and up. Kicking it down a couple more years, I'm not sure is the best use of the money if they're going to continue to see 10 to 20% increase in costs to do things. I'm not sure.
My concern is that if we spend the $500,000 for preliminary engineering and design and what if there's a code change? And then we've spent the $500,000 and then Caltrans is going to come back and say, no, now we have, now we're spending additional monies for revisions.
Sounds like that's a tier two project for further conversation with Caltrans. It's come back with what we know and don't know. We're, we're getting into speculation land of what can we do or not do?
I feel like we've put in a lot of time with traffic studies in the past at that location, trying to show that we do and care about that intersection. And so I agree. I do have a question on, are we good with that topic?
If you have more questions, ask them.
I do. So the Irwin Avenue waterline replacement project, how is that already in line to be the next waterline replaced? And how necessary is that for the next in line for the, for our water resources?
It's, it's one that is in line. It's a tier two project, right? So we can move that one up in terms of, if I heard your question right, you know.
How necessary?
Was it's need?
Yeah, is it dire? Is it, you know?
Turn to Jake.
Sorry, Jake.
The one I won't answer on.
Jason the fifth. I don't, I don't think it's dire, but it's, it's one that we've sort of had our eye on.
Okay.
How does the rest of the council feel about the restoration of the crosswalk at Elizabeth and 120?
To me, that's a Caltrans issue because anything we try and touch on Highway 120 is always, is going to go back to Caltrans. I don't think we have any pull Brennan on 120, at Campbell on 120 or at Elizabeth on 120. As much as I'd love to, I almost feel like they pulled it out just to say this is our jurisdiction and that's.
I'm not sure we're going to get this all knocked out in the next 12 months anyways. I think that, I think we can put a line on them there in that whole pedestrian safety zone item there. Add that in as far as a research and, and bring back some more information and then see where we land with that with Caltrans and what our options are. I don't want to walk away from it. I'd like to see something there, but I don't know if we have the funds for it. But we have to start somewhere.
Jalen, on the Dent Elementary sidewalks, do we have any sort of easements along these properties? Are we going to have to come in and take part of the properties from these?
According to engineering's initial estimates, we don't need to acquire any right of way.
Okay.
We have all the right of way necessary.
Regarding the 120 Brennan intersection project, that project's been listed in our CIP for the city, you know, for several years, but it hasn't had any money put towards it or it's scheduled out years in advance and it has continuously, in, in, in my recall, gets pushed back. And we have had a lot of discussions with Caltrans. They've had a lot of turnover in staffing, but it's just one of those things where they're, until recently, they haven't been on the same page with that. But now they've indicated, you know, hey, we can work with you on that. But yeah, you have to have some skin in the game. But it has been something that we've had because prior councils have, have made that a priority because of the issues and the response we're receiving from the community regarding that area. Yes, we are limited because it's not our street, even though it's in our city.
I don't think all five of us are disputing that there's a need there, but we want to make sure that, make sure that Caltrans does their part as well.
Yeah, no, understandable. And that, and that, you know, I, I can't speak for past councils, but that might be why. but that might be why money wasn't being put towards it.
Jalen, can we talk to Caltrans and ask them that, hey, you know, we feel that we can put some money towards this, but can you work with us? At least just try to start the conversation.
Yeah, the one new comment I have here is if they can commit to a timeframe. So we have been talking with them very regularly over the last three or four months. There has been a commitment to the intersection. They follow very strict criteria. The intersection does not meet warrants right now in, in their terminology. It doesn't have enough traffic on Brennan at this point to be eligible for their proactive pot of funding. So we are in the reactive pot of funding. They expect that to take, you know, four to six years to kind of move up the list to get that reactive pot of money. In the meantime, we could put up some money, get it into PS and E, you know, and PE, which would basically a year, two years. And meanwhile, we're on the waiting list, we're moving up the list. And as we're moving up the list, we are doing some of the preliminary work. So that has been the idea behind it.
So you're saying if we spend $500,000, it's gonna put us in a higher priority spot? Or are you just saying we're spending it along the way as we're waiting?
We're spending it along the way as we're waiting.
Gotcha.
So that when we do become eligible in four to six years, we're not then starting from scratch. If that was the council's direction, right, we are, we've already got the first phase done.
All right, let's go ahead and open it up to the folks in the audience here if they'd like to come to the podium and ask questions or concerns or comments.
I'd be strongly in favor of Brennan 120. We all go through it. There's no turn lanes, right or left. That's caused numerous accidents. We've had some fatalities there. And half the people that live on the west side of town take their kids to Van Allen. It's always been an issue. Sooner or later, they're gonna kill somebody else out there. At one time, we did have money for that light years and years and years ago, but once again, we're going up against Caltrans and their warrants. And a warrant is a death or accident. And we've been real lucky so far, but I think anything we can do to get this on the front burner is gonna be well worth it. Like I said, especially parents taking their kids to school. I've always been rear-ended making a left-hand turn onto Brennan. I've got a friend of mine's been hit twice there. Then we've all seen the cross at the intersection where someone was killed. But that's gotta be a priority. Thank you.
Anybody else online or in the chambers here? This was not an action item necessarily, just direction. Do we think we've given enough direction to staff on this item to move this along or not?
Before we provide any sort of prioritization, I think it definitely, we need some more feedback from staff and Caltrans.
I personally would want to move forward with the four projects. And then those two tier two projects, get more information on and then kick out that other one.
What is the, what are the four? The pavement restoration?
All, all the projects except for the Brennan one, I'd want to get more information to make sure if we spend the $500,000, we can move this ball down the field faster and get it done. And then the widening project, to me, just, you know, I think that's more about a bigger picture scenario, which I really don't agree with, so.
I can just add where we sit in the fiscal year is we will have a budget coming up shortly. And so we can, in the next several months, so we can provide an update on any projects that were, you know, staff were directed to and then adjust, have this similar conversation for the next fiscal year, which is coming up in a couple of months.
I tend to agree with at least the first three on this list, the pavement restoration, McHenry Crossing, and Dent Elementary School sidewalks. I would like more information on the Irwin project when Justin's back.
Justin, is there any way that the McHenry Crossing striping, is there any way that that could be done before the start of the next school year? I'm sorry, not Justin, Jalen.
I believe so, yes. There's a chance, not a guarantee.
Okay. Move on to 10, everybody? Item 10, approve and authorize the mayor to execute the license agreement approval, approved in a form approved by the city attorney with the San Joaquin County Registrar of Voters for the installation of a permanent ballot box outside City Hall and Police Department.
So this item has come before you as a discussion item and, and obviously there's been some movement in that area. And so prior to the March election, the San Joaquin Registrar of Voters sent some information over to the city talking about a program, a pilot program they're doing that they're moving forward on for the next five years. And it was essentially taking these large permanent drop boxes and making them available in the cities. If you recall, if you've ever dropped off ballots here at the, at our office, what they would do is give us a temporary ballot box. It would be located here in City Hall inside, which made it only accessible between operating hours Monday through Thursday, eight to five. And then on election day, we would typically have somebody stay late. It always used to fall on a planning commission meeting and we'd keep the doors open till 8:00 PM on election night. Since then, they want to do away with the temporary boxes, put in permanent boxes located in town. They're only looking to have one in our city due to our size. You can recall that there is one located at Orlando's Market. Originally, they were wanting to have one located here at City Hall and have council provide direction to their City Hall, library, any public area, so long as, as council selected one. In the meanwhile, they were trying to hit a number of boxes available in the county. They had previously worked with Orlando's Market in the past with their other location located in Linden. They reached out to the property owner and installed one over on that property to make sure that they, there was one in the city for the March 5th election. And speaking with them, they're completely open to having that box removed if the city were to approve one, one of our facilities. Which when we last discussed this item, majority understanding from the council was City Hall or Police Department area. And so we did meet with the Registrar of Voters. We looked at potential areas that boxes could be located at. They, they were open to removing the one at Orlando's if we select an area. And we can have that done prior to the November election. So basically, these boxes are, are pretty large. Permanent, only open for 30 days. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, no problem.
So that would come with a camera that's watching the box?
Correct. And so what they would do, it's a permanent ballot box installed. They'll cover all of the costs. If they have to pour a foundation to, to secure the box to, they'll pay for it. The box will be accessible to the public to be able to put something in it approximately 30 days prior to election. And in that 30 days.
30 days?
Yeah, they only take, you get 30 days to take ballots in, and so they open drop boxes.
That sounds ridiculous to me personally.
So at that, at that time period, they bring in a temporary camera. If you might have seen the one that were located in Orlando's Market, it was the ones that looked very similar to what police departments put out, you know, at shopping centers and such. It has the blue light flashing and it provides 24-hour streaming, live surveillance of the ballot box for the entire 30 days, 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And there's a website that you could go to, to watch all of the ballot boxes in the county. And so that's what they're looking at. In the meanwhile, when it's not being used, they have it, they have like a professional lock that is a part of that so that it can't be tampered with.
What would be the recourse if someone felt like they were seeing cheating on the camera? Like.
So because our elections are all consolidated through county, you'd have to report it to the San Joaquin County Registrar of Voters office. And so recourse wise, I'm not absolutely sure what they would do, but you would basically file a complaint with them and then they'd need to look into that.
So when they bring the, we'll call it the mobile camera, based on they're gonna take up a parking spot with that, have we found a location that makes sense for our use of the facility? So that doesn't create a impediment to normal day-to-day business?
Yes, so we pulled up three locations and I have some photos here. And it was the Public Works Superintendent, myself, and their staff that looked at this area. So this was one of the first areas we looked at. We can relocate the trash and recycle bins to another area in front of the building and put the box located here. This doesn't provide drive-up capability, which isn't required, but you can still pull up to City Hall, which for the, for the most part, our, our parking lot is pretty empty. Most people that come in are not here very long. They're here five, 10 minutes, pull in, pull out. They'd be able to drop off their ballot. I will say, now that we've had a March 5th election, we did have several people come to City Hall looking to drop off their ballots. And we did have to tell them they had to go to Orlando's to drop it off. So we did have people looking to drop for the March 5th election. In talking with the Registrar of Voters, they had, for this last election, no issues with the ballot boxes themselves that they had advised, more with vandalism of the camera. And so the cameras are, are the things that get spray painted, graffitied and things like that, which they, upon reporting that to them, they come out immediately and address those issues. So.
With this location, because it is fairly close to the front door?
Correct.
Or with the size, I can't tell with the size of that concrete, it's not gonna create a problem with anybody, mobility challenge?
It is not. It'll stay on that square.
We're still gonna be ADA and everything? We're still good with ADA requirements?
Yes, every spot that we have will still make ADA compliance. So this was one of the first locations we looked at, which was next to the front door. At the last meeting when we discussed this, we talked about Police Department. There is an opening here right in front of the flag pole. That is large enough to where a box can be put at this location. It could possibly even be drive, drive-up friendly if needed. But we can put the box at this location, which is in front of the Police Department, which is across from City Hall. And these boxes are large, they're red, white and blue. People will see it. I don't think anybody could miss it, especially when you're pulling in. So this was an area that was also looked at. This wasn't the number one area, but, but there, there is an open space available. And then we have the third area that's more towards the rear of the building, but still visible from City Hall. This is basically past the front door of City Hall. What they propose is removal of that rock and removal of the bush. And we can install, they'll pour a concrete pad and install it in that landscape area. And so you would pull up to the, there's two or three parking spots that are located right where our bus typically parks in the evening. And they'd be able to pull up, walk in, drop it off and then, and then leave. And so these were the three top areas that staff looked at.
But is putting it in this location, isn't that creating the potential for access issue to that landscape backflow preventer?
No, because it'll be in the actual landscape area. This is on, to the right, and I probably should have showed that there's a whole walkway there, or four-foot wide walkway. And so this would be in the planner where the rock and the bush is at, outside of the walkway that's on the right-hand side.
Right, what I'm saying though is, I mean, those, that box is huge. And would, if anybody needed to get to that backflow preventer, are you gonna?
Oh, you're talking about the, okay, piping there. At the time we looked this over, it wasn't, it wasn't an issue that came up. The backflow preventer's there and accessible, and so it didn't come up as an issue.
The box is about five foot by five. It's like a five-foot cube almost, give or take a few dimensions.
Yeah, the dimensions are in the back of the agreement.
I recall.
So weighs a thousand pounds, so you don't have to worry about somebody taking off of it. Its height is 53 and a half inches and the width is about 65 inches wide. And so you're looking at.
Four and a half and five and a half.
Is there any way to restrict the, the, the opening or is that just standardized?
It's standardized. The county is the one that would be restricting it. So this box is 100% theirs. The license agreement would be basically allowing for them to have the box on our location. They would be responsible for it. They would be the one taking care of it. And we're essentially just providing them the location to have it located here to our resident.
And, and just from my own understanding, if we don't approve this here, then it's gonna be automatically put somewhere else?
It's currently at Orlando's and so.
We can't kick it out of town at all?
Can't kick it out of town at all. They're, they are required at, at that level to provide access to voting, to all residents and to all county residents.
Somebody wanting to remove it from Orlando's, like, does the owner want it gone or does the county? I mean, is it okay at Orlando's as it stands?
So there's no issue with where it is currently. It was just originally when we had started conversations with them, they had made it sound like we had time to make this, to make this decision, that there was no hurry. And then as things started moving forward, a box showed up in town and I had to reach out to them like, where did this come from? And it was essentially, you know, oh, we reached out to Orlando's, they had a spot. We need to put as many boxes out for the March 5th election as we can. So we moved forward and put one in your town. But if you, if you are later on come back and say you want one at your location, we'll totally come back and remove the one at Orlando's. But we needed, we needed something in escalon for the March 5th election.
So is it an option just to keep the one at Orlando's?
If you don't want to sign this agreement, the one at Orlando's would stay.
Do they have a camera as well?
They do. They'll put in a camera at, right in the parking lot area.
I can tell you guys, I was here before the election and I was in the lobby. I was walking out and there were, there was a couple in front of me walking out and one of them made the comment, how embarrassing, I can't even draw my ballot off at City Hall. So I'm like, well, because there were signs on the door that said, go to Orlando's, drop off your ballot.
And I can tell you as a front office, City Hall employee, we had multiple people come in every single day. We put signs up on the doors and people were still coming in asking if they could drop their ballots off at City Hall.
We, we hear that now, but you know what we're gonna hear when it's sitting out there? We're gonna hear from everybody how ugly it is and why does it sit there for every day for two months of use every two years? I mean, it's just my opinion, is it's junk and let's leave it where it's at and not ugly up our City Hall and Police Station with a flashing blue light and a, a camera trailer and then a giant box. Granted, it has the flag on it, that's, that's fine. I appreciate the flag, in a flag, not on a big metal box. Thousand-pound metal box bolted down to the front of our property.
Before there was ballot drop-off, there was just a ballot, a voting location and it wasn't at City Hall. So I mean, it, it's just a pattern thing. And so once we get people in that right mindset of this isn't where we drop, we didn't drop this off for a very long time at City Hall.
I guess my concern is, is ballot stuffing. So my concern is if it's at Orlando's, people are gonna be a lot more brazen ballot stuffing than they're gonna be in front of the police office. It's just my opinion. So I mean, that's where I'm coming from. So I, I think I'm looking at more of a election integrity scenario. I'm not, I could care less if it's, I mean, no disrespect or anything, but I don't care about the, the, you know, aesthetics of it. I would rather us know that we have an election that's, you know, we can trust.
At Orlando's, there's people there 24 hours a day and it's well-lit. Some of these locations I don't see as being as well-lit. And there aren't employees there like there are at Orlando's 24 hours a day. And so that's, I'm, I'm on the same page as you on what we're trying to prevent. I'm just seeing it as there's employees, there's people in and out, getting gas, doing that at Orlando's. Here, it's dark behind the office building and that kind of thing.
Yeah, well, the cops are on patrol at night, right? So I'm assuming they can make that part of their loop. I mean, they probably already do.
So here's a dumb question. They provide the cameras, but are the cameras monitored by somebody 24/7? I mean, you said that they provide, they would provide.
Yeah, it says 24-hour surveillance.
That's for them to go back in case something happens.
I would think that they would, I mean, I can't guarantee it because I don't know who they're staffing at the time and what their direction is. But it is 24-hour surveillance that they would be recording and recording everything. So yeah, that, the idea would be, you know, and if you have an alternative location you'd like us to look at. So yeah, the idea would be, you know, and if you have an alternative location you'd like us to look at, they would obviously like an answer sooner than later, because they are going to start prepping for the November election, but we do have time. It just needs to be approved, I believe they said 100 days before election, and so we have until about May. But the quicker we can move, they did emphasize it'll take them a few weeks or possibly a month to coordinate with their General Services Department to get the foundation poured and get everything situated. And so they do need that time to be able to put it in.
Let's open this up to the folks here in the room, if they would like to come up and speak on that, yes or no? Anybody in the room or online, have any thoughts on this topic? I'm not forcing you to come up, Mr. Haskins, but...
I'm in agreement with Councilman Hagan. Voter integrity is utmost important. Gracie and I work the polls every two years, so we see a lot of this coming in. But, well, see, my argument's going to be against the boxes in any way, shape, or form. I should probably leave it there, but I think in a public spot, here at City Hall, I would feel more comfortable, even though there's arguments for Orlando's. Like Councilman Strowman said too, people kind of expect it to be here. The only thing I, I'm arguing boxes versus no boxes again, so we'll leave it at that.
All right, anybody else? All right. So what's the thoughts at the table here? What are our thoughts here?
So I understand that the concern is regarding voter integrity. But based off of our, what we saw in the March election, what would be the harm of removing the garbage cans and putting it right out there at the front door? Police Department drives past here frequently throughout the night, actually throughout the day and the night. And if the security camera is monitoring it, once it becomes live, I mean, all we can do is, so if we try it for the November election and it doesn't work, can we tell them, sorry, this location doesn't work, you need to find someplace else?
That's a good question.
I would struggle with it honestly at the front of the building right next to the door. It's an eyesore. I'd rather have it take out the rock towards the back of the facility. It's still, you're not going to miss it pulling in the parking lot, but right by that front door, it ruins the aesthetics of the front of the building that was designed how many years ago. I really don't want to put that in front of the other two locations that were looked at myself. This one that's currently on the screen would be my selection to get it away from the front of both buildings a little bit, but still visible when you pull in to see it.
Yeah, and this area is more visible, so if you're pulling into the parking lot, it'll be like right there.
You can't miss it, it's going to be right over here, you can't really miss it in my opinion, but as opposed to the box right next to the front door.
Yeah.
And they would ensure that they would pour a foundation that could support the weight, et cetera, et cetera?
Yes, they just need to coordinate with their department, and so it'll take some time. So in election years, we would have to provide 200 calendar days' notice if we wanted it removed, and in non-election years, it would be 90 days' calendar notice. So three to six months, depending what year, if we decided so. If you waited till January after the November election, we could exercise that if it was something you didn't care about, or didn't care to have, and then it would be 90 days.
Just in regards to ballot stuffing or election integrity, I think it's highly important. But we're in a community with less than 3,000 registered voters. We would be highly flagged if there was, if more people showed up at the polls than we actually had registered voters. And in our county, we are such a small speck that we're not going to move the needle anyway, not even as much on a national election. The biggest challenge to integrity would be more local elections.
Correct.
And...
That's the truth.
It's under surveillance for 30 days. Anybody that wanted to go back and take a look, I'm sure that's all stored in the cloud somewhere. It could be gone back. I mean, this is the epitome of California politics right here. We've spent, my, thousands of dollars just in this conversation, talking about a box that's already installed somewhere and up and functioning, to spend several more thousand dollars of California money to move a box, to potentially not like it, to talk about it and spend several thousand more dollars to move it back, again, to spend several thousand more California dollars. And we're going to do what we want to do with the whole thing, but to me, it is like an extreme waste of money, time, and effort to move a box, is it a mile?
Maybe.
That's just my opinion. I mean, we're all entitled to them, I guess.
Jake, how often do you guys access that landscape backflow?
A couple times a year.
I just...
Before we made a decision on that location right there, I think we'd have to look at the as-bills to see. I'm almost positive there's water lines underneath.
That was my concern, because if they're coming out...
If they pour a pad there, I think there might be some stuff underneath that.
We're leaning towards leaving where it's at and move on.
I strongly disagree.
I would agree with Mayor Protem.
I say, the reason I say that is, a guy was already caught in Lodi. What was it, 25, 40 ballots or something, right? Councilman Walker won by what, seven or 11?
11.
11 votes. You could very easily swing a local election with very little effort. If you don't have it, I think in a spot that's, you know, at least has a perception of more, you know, security, is the way I look at it. And I get where you're coming from, from a dollars and cents standpoint, makes sense, but this is one of the few times I tend to disagree with you.
No worries, cheaters are going to cheat no matter what, so it's...
They're going to try, for sure.
So if we don't need to decide on this tonight, can we just take a look at the as-built drawings to see if this location, if there's a water line?
I mean, that depends, is there a majority here that's interested in that, or would that change your opinion if this area is available, or...
You can say for me, if we're going to move it, this is the only location I would approve myself, is this location towards the back of the building that's on the screen. The only one I would be in favor of. The other two I would have to say no, for me. If there's a lot of infrastructure underneath it, that's a significant problem.
Does Council want us to come back then at a future meeting and confirm as-bills on this area? Or if there's no as-bills, does staff have permission, you know, are no water lines located in that area to move forward with this item?
Yeah, I was just going to say, if, the motion could just be a contingency, you could build a contingency into the motion. So put it there, if there were a motion and if it was passed, to put it at City Hall, and you could say, put it there unless you can't because of infrastructure, then put it there, and then you wouldn't have to come back.
Then I would make a motion that we bring it to City Hall and put it where Dave thinks it should be, and with the contingency that if there's some major problem that we revisit that conversation.
Okay, so not, not move it somewhere else, bring it back to the Council?
Correct.
Okay.
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion on that motion? And we'll go ahead and go to a vote. All those in favor, signal that by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
Nay.
Nay. Motion carries 3-2. Item 11, consider and approve the employment agreement between the city and Jalen French for interim city manager services staff.
Thank you, Mayor. So on February 13th, I submitted a letter of resignation and gave 60-day notice. Development and Community Services Manager, Jalen French, has accepted the seat of interim city manager attached to the employment agreement. He'll be filling in the roles of both positions, which are the Development and Community Services Manager and interim city manager for the term commencing April 15th through November 15th. And then the salary is listed there, which is the base salary for my position in this position. So if there's any questions or any clarifications needed on the agreement, just let us know.
And I'll just say, it's essentially structured with the initial term, assuming that Council makes a, finds a permanent city manager by then. If a permanent city manager is chosen other than Jalen, if Jalen were to even apply, et cetera, et cetera, he would slot back into his current role as Community Development, Development and Community Services Manager. So he has a fallback in that contract, and then he would just go back to doing that role at the salary that he's now receiving in that current role. There obviously will be a little bit of salary savings during that time that, because Jalen's gracious enough to try to wear both hats during that period. But understanding that, you know, he's one person and he won't be able to do both jobs full-time, but he is going to try to keep things afloat on interim basis at least, and that's kind of the long and short of it.
Questions here, comments, or concerns at the council level here? Anybody in the hall here that has any questions or concerns with, or online if there's anybody out there?
It seems like we have more turnover here than a McDonald's. So I just want to encourage the five of you to try to figure out why that is. I wouldn't want anybody to be here one or two years and then turn around and walk out the door. So we had this with our Police Department, right? We know what part of that was. We've yet to address the other part of that, but I just want you five specifically to try and see if you can figure out why we have the kind of turnover we do. Most government jobs you can die from and never get fired. This one, people leave in droves. So there's some kind of a thing going on in this town. Don't know what it is. But I would highly encourage you to figure that out. It seems like we've operated on interim finance managers or interim all kinds of things in this town. It's insane. I would just encourage you guys to look into that. That's it.
Thank you.
Typically, city manager's lifespan in any town is five to six years. That's even less. It's just the nature of the beast. Sooner or later, if that manager does everything every council member tells him to do, they're going to irritate enough people, they'll be standing outside with pitchforks and a rope. So it's the nature of the beast.
Jalen, put your earmuffs on, please.
I think a lot of that has to do with just culture nowadays too, generational job moves. I think the trend is that people don't stay at their jobs. As much as they do, they use this for a stepping stone, just like they use other jobs, and then they use the title to gain a better salary.
A lot of, if you're not moving up, you're moving out within three years on average or less.
Two to three years is the average drag drop right now, yeah?
Yeah. Nonetheless, we're at the situation we're at.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I would like to make a motion to approve the employment agreement between the city and Jalen French for any interim city manager services.
I will second that.
Third that if we could. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Next up, Council Communications and Future Agenda Items. Councilman Strowman, we'll start with you tonight.
Yeah, not going to be long-winded. We've been here a while tonight. I just wish to say, Jalen, congratulations. We're here to support you. Interim Chief Hardgraves, same for you, we're here to support you. Sorry, Jake, you're not an interim.
I'm good with this.
And last, but certainly not least, don't cry. But, and the time that I've known you on the Planning Commission, and now on City Council, I really appreciate what, all the hard work and the dedication that you've provided to the city of Esclon. Both personally and professionally, you will be missed. And I would like to state publicly that I really respect the decision that you made. Because all of us have young families, and we recognize the importance of family and what they mean. And I know it came with reservations, but you're putting your family first, and that's what matters. So best of luck. That's all I have.
And Councilman Walker?
Okay. Thank you to Andy. I know he's not on the line right now, but that was a great budget presentation. It was exactly what we, I know it's a lot longer than our usual mid-year budgets, but it was something I think that we needed coming out of all of these changes that have been happening for the past couple of years. It's in and out of employees here, and he's just made everything very clear. And I think moving forward, we're going to look on the things that we can to balance that budget. And for Andy and Jalen, I think that's something, looking for that money coming in, that free money. People want to give us money to spend, that's what we're looking for, and I appreciate all the work going into that, looking for opportunities for us to be able to improve our town. And so thank you for, Jalen, for stepping up. Thanks, Chief Hardgraves, and thanks, guest Jake, for being here. As well as Jenny, welcome to the team. So moving forward with our new team members, that's what I'm hoping, that our town, you know, it is a big turnover, but sometimes that might be the refresh that we need. And I hope that we can all work as a team to, moving forward, to secure our goals and get to where we need from here. So that's it for today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Engel?
I think it's all been covered. I have no further communications.
Thank you. Mayor Protem?
Basically, piggyback on what's already been said, but a couple different things. Jalen, I think your, the skills that you bring to the table, I'm excited to see. I do think that, I'm obviously always cautious, but cautiously optimistic. You're going to be here a lot longer than five years. As far as Chief Hardgraves, I look forward to seeing what you can bring to the table too. You know, you've stepped up for the city, and I'm very appreciative of that. Jake is Jake. And Dominique, obviously, we're going to miss you quite a bit. You know, it was your decision to bring Jalen here in the first place. You know, Jalen here in the first place, right? So you've really shown that you have good judge of character as far as building a team around you. So I know you're going to do good when you head over to Houston. And I definitely think, you know, putting your family first is definitely the right answer. So look forward to seeing what you do over there, and thanks for your time in Esclon. And Jenny too, coming to the front. That's all I have for tonight.
Thank you. I'm not sure I can say that much better with everybody else that is set up here. Welcome to the new interim folks coming in, appreciate everything you're doing. You've been doing a great job prior to this, so we expect the same, great things you've been doing to continue on for all of us. Dominique, it's been great working with you. It's been a pleasure as mayor, working with you, and as a council member prior to that. I know you've been here for a while with the city and done nothing but great things and helped us grow where we needed to with that, so thank you very much for that. Piggybacking on the budget, I think everybody knows that we're looking next year to be a zero-sum game, put a little bit of money in the pocket, if you will, and tighten those strings, and that's what we'll be looking to do to increase revenue and decrease costs. So we can start turning that around as well, hopefully with some future growth as well with revenue opportunities. So that's all I've got for tonight. Look forward to seeing you in the next meeting, that will be in April, and with that, good night.